I'd like to call this meeting the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District to order. We do have a quorum with Director Menley, Director Ward, myself, Director Land, Director Schott, and Director Palmer. If everyone will please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We will be conducting two public hearings today. And we have had three sign up. I will be limiting public comment to three minutes each. And we will start with the first hearing on our Shot Ranch regular permit application.
Good evening.
Hang on, just Ms. Anaya?
Yes.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, members. My name is Anita Naya, a leader of the water organization. And I'm here to address the shot regular permit request. It is to our understanding that Mr. Shot wants to change part of his exemption permit and add industrial use. He cannot do this according to the Supreme Court in case number zero six dash zero nine zero four. And I have a copy if whoever doesn't have one. Anybody that doesn't have one, get one.
I'll take one.
Thank you. Anybody?
I'm ready.
Mr. Ellis. You're very aware of this ruling. And because it applied to another application in 2017 in this board. In that application, it was recognized that you cannot change the use of a permit that has already been issued. We had the same scenario tonight. I would suggest advice of the court.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya. Mr. Veriel.
I'm a leader with the border organization. The district has permitted approximately 60,000 acre feet more than the appropriate model available groundwater. The most recent GMA study meeting, Bill Hosgen stated that as the district shows to recalibrate its mag, the appropriate number will be approximately seven to 10 acre feet of groundwater. Today, the district has approximately 70,000 acre feet of water he has permitted out to folks like that is the ranch, Beth's Live, and Scott family. The district needs to reduce its permit amount, not increase it. Currently, Scott is using only a fraction of total permit amount for irrigation. If followed to convert his permit to include industrial, this would almost certainly increase the amount of pumping, although it would not increase the total permitted amount. Our aquifer is already suffering. And it has missed its DFC with the past six years. We cannot approve permits or permit amendments that will increase pumping to those who already have more than they need.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Veriel. Mr. Gonzalez? Do you have a comment you want to make on this hearing?
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. My name is Richard Gonzalez, and I am a resident of Rocketville. I and other citizens of this county have been coming to this board to ask it to implement a drought plan for over three years now. A drought plan that is mandated by the Texas law, yet nothing has been done but resisted county citizens. This board has a few, has a a function to protect existing water users and, but not a select few permit holders. Now, some permit holders are asking to raise their water use as the drought continues. I asked this board to do the honorable job of protecting all of existing water users and by denying this increased water use and also release a 2024 report that informs us all what the condition of the aquifer is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, that's all we've had signed up for public comment. So we do anything else other than close the public hearing? Okay, we will close the public hearing on the our Shot Ranch regular permit. And now we will open the public current. Roll up for the public hearing on the Langston Ranch. I guess I could have got that one first. Any comments on that one? Additional comments? Okay, that's close to you. Uh, now we're going to move on to public comments on the agenda items. Either any of the three of you have any comments on the agenda items? No one else signed up?
Your comment.
Yeah, I'm talking to the public. Okay. We'll move past public comments on the agenda items to agenda item number four. Discussion possible action, action, Langston regular permit. What's the pleasure of the board?
I've got several questions on this. And I don't know, Mr. Langston, or who owns it or whatever. But back when all these test wells were put in, the purpose of these test wells were to test the wells around them. And to my knowledge, there was no wells tested around any one of these seven wells to see if they even, what the damage would be to the other wells around them. Only thing I've seen is the springs go dry. So I'm, I'm wondering why were they permitted test wells if they didn't do any testing around them? I mean, this, that's a, should be a big issue.
I would, I would like to clear up something right now because there's been a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, been a lot of confusion between, between the term test well and test permit. And they're not the same thing. Uh, they don't have anything to do with each other. There was a lot of information that was posted online regarding test wells that were with Texas Water Development Board. That's where somebody is drilling well to see if they can hit water. It doesn't have to do with the testing permit underneath this district.
Well, it has everything to do with it.
Well, I'm just explaining the difference between the two director. And that's all. As far as what our rules require, our rules require when someone asks for a test permit that we notify the public. And the public can show interest in that and allow us to monitor their wells. If they don't do that, they don't do that. We have, we still have the monitoring data off of our monitoring that network that we have throughout the county.
I'd like to add, if you'd read your bylaws, 3.04, the regular permit pumped from the minimum of one year on completion of pumping test completed. Okay, now why would you put that in there? If you're not going to test anything, why was the permit?
It's not the bylaws, that's, that's the rules.
Well, that's the rule.
Well, I'm slipping to it. 3. what?
3.04.
3.04.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand what's going on. I'm not blaming none of these people that have wells.
Just trying to understand.
This has nothing to do with that. This is what the bylaws and our rules are supposed to keep us from doing and making bad mistakes like this.
I'm, I'm trying to under, you brought up the rule, Director, and I'm trying to understand the point that you're, you're making with 3.04. After granting a testing permit by the district, the well has been pumped for, and the well has been pumped for a minimum of one year or an applicable pump test has been completed. That's or, not and. Uh, the applicant must submit an application for a regular permit on a form approved by the district, which these two applicants have, which must state the quantity pumped or requesting acre feet. The amount granted for a regular permit may not exceed the maximum amount requested and tested for under the test permit. The applicant's submission must contain a written request for a public hearing on a form approved by the district.
There's another question. There was none of the forms that I've got on the test wells, on monthly reports, how much they were actually supposed to test, how much they were supposed to pump. You just read it that it did have to have a, or set requirement of how much you pumped. I mean, if we're going to make these rules up and we're going to follow these rules, let's follow the rules. If that's all what you've been holding everybody up on is the rules, the rules, the rules. I'm tired of the rules. I want to do something for the water.
Well, we're bound by the rules, Director. That's just the law.
What did you just read and you're not binding by?
You show me, Director, because I, I still cannot understand your point.
The point is, why did they put, call them test wells if they're not going to test anything around it?
If you read, Director?
3.07.
The rules allow, the rules allow for the public to come in and allow us to test their wells. If they don't do it, there's nothing we can do about that. You want to change the rules, we change the rules.
When he bought it, and he put them down as test wells. My question is, why did he call them test wells? They're 11,000 feet, 1,100 feet. They had water.
Again, you're using the term test well for a test permit, and they are not the same thing.
Where does it say it in the rules that they're not the same thing? Because I've read all this stuff trying to figure it out, and I get confused. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not as talented as you are. Explain it to me.
I would like to know what you want me to explain to you, Director, because I fail to see you. You have not explained your point yet.
The point is, why did they put in, call them test wells when they didn't test anything around them?
They didn't call them test wells, Director. I just told you that. They called them test permits. It's a test permit.
What is test permit? Testing for what? They were already existing wells.
It's an opportunity to see.
To get free water?
If the, no. If you would not interrupt me, I'll finish answering your question. It's an opportunity to see what impact it has over a 365 day period on the aquifer. That's the purpose of a testing permit.
Since 2019, the aquifer has dropped. When they, when they were put in, and the, and the springs go dry.
Which aquifer are you talking about?
All of it.
Oh, sir, there, there's, I'll have Vince, and I'll have Jim explain to everybody here the difference in different aquifers. They are different.
If you don't mind, Mr. President.
Please.
I want to kind of explain the process here. I sent y'all a memo that kind of detailed some of the differences between the Kenny County process and what most districts operate. Most districts, you have to apply for a drilling permit, you have to apply for an operating permit, you have to apply for a transport permit, you're going to do that. They had then hold a, a public hearing on that. And they set a deadline by which people have to contest that. People come in, they file a protest against that permit. Then they have a preliminary hearing where they determine who has raised a justiciable issue and who has standing to raise that issue. That then would move to, for anybody, if there are parties that qualifies party status and have raised issues and have standing, that goes to the next step, there's an evidentiary hearing. The evidentiary hearing is a, is a full trial. There's depositions, there's discovery, there's filed, prefiled testimony, there's all kinds of reports. It typically turns into a battle of the experts where they have one hydrogeologist say there's only 600 acre feet available from that location, and another hydrogeologist says there's only 300 acre feet of water from that, that location. And the administrative law judge has to figure out which one of them they believe. And the administrative law judge then decides, okay, the reason why I picked this one over that one is for the following reasons. They come out with a proposal for decision, stating what their findings of fact are, what their conclusions of law are. They apply the facts of the law, and they say either grant the permit or deny the permit or grant the permit with these conditions or this amount. This district is almost 20 years ago now, decided that they were going to do it differently. They didn't, they had been through the several, many lengthy arguments. First, they went through the historic and existing use permits where the evidence had, really only, that only applied there was how much they had produced during that historic use period. And they had to present that evidence. They presented that evidence. The board accepted some of it. They denied some of it. Some of the permits were changed from what their, their expert had recommended. That resulted in literally 17 years of litigation over those permits. Then they had applications for new permits. There, the, the existing historic use permits, and you have the regular permits. There was applications for regular permits. Uh, one of the, which was by the Grass Valley Group, where they were going to produce X amount of water. They wanted to be able to sell that water to City of San Antonio. And they had their, their hearing in front of a hearing examiner that the district hired, which happened to be a general manager of another district in the print of the aquifer. So she was very familiar with the print of the aquifer. They put on their expert witness testimony. At the end of that process, she actually determined that they had not presented everything they should have presented to have a complete application because they didn't have any final user for that water. They said they don't have any contracts with anybody to use this water, therefore they don't have any evidence of beneficial use. Without evidence of beneficial use, you're not supposed to even be considering the permit. And so when that went in front of the board, the board agreed and said, your, your, your application is not administratively complete. We're not going to grant your permit. Well, they filed a lawsuit. We have that lawsuit going for, I don't know, three or four or five years before they finally withdrew, withdrew that lawsuit. After those battles and those long, expensive contested case hearings, the board said, we want to do a different process. What we want to do, we want to see what's actually happening. We don't want to have a battle of the experts. We want to give people a year to operate. And everybody comes in and get a test permit. And that test permit can operate for up to a year, has to operate for a year, or, or do a pump test separately from that. And after operating for a year, anybody, and for 90 days after they notice and say, we're going to be doing this, this well, any member of the public that, that wants to say, we want our well to be monitored during this test and, and come in and say, we want to be an interested person. We want you to monitor our well. People either do that or they don't. In the meantime, the district does look at what's happening to the monitor wells and other things around that, that test well permit, test permit where it's being, where it's operating, and see what, what has happened. And if they see that there is a disparate or unreasonable offsite impact, the board has the ability during that year to come in and say, you're going to have to reduce how much you're pumping. You're already having an unreasonable impact offsite.
I can inject something real quick. That's at any time during that year, or you can cut it off.
And multiple times during that year. If they reduce it the first time, that doesn't do enough. They can come back and reduce it again. At the end of that year process, then they come back and say, okay. Yeah, this is how much you produced during the, the test permit, and these are the impacts that we saw. Here's the permit we're going to, going to grant under these circumstances or these conditions. And, um, anybody who is an interested person then has the ability to become a protester and take it to a contested case hearing and go through that process. Again, there might still be a battle of the experts at that point. But there would be real data from how much they had really pumped versus how, what had really happened to the other wells around the aquifer. And the idea was that this was going to make the process a lot easier. Apparently it has. We haven't had a contested case hearing in 25 years. So.
When's the last time we had a lawsuit on one?
I'm sorry, we had one contested case hearing, that's 25 years.
Well, actually, we didn't have one. We thought we were going to have one.
Settle it.
But we settled it.
Settle it. That's right. Started one.
My point is, if the public does not come in there and do this, and after five years, because it's been six years when I worked at the Pinto, the creeks were flowing west and the Pinto, west and the Pinto go for flowing. When I worked there, when I quit, that year, the spring went dry going across the highway at 90, that year. That was 2019. And it hadn't come back. Even the west, the west was trickling. The west Pinto was trickling when I left. And they haven't come back. Now, that doesn't tell you the aquifer's going down. There's something wrong with somebody's head.
No questions, aquifer's gone down.
Okay, and he just sat there and said it wasn't.
I'm, I'm the, I'm the attorney, not the hydrogeologist, so.
Well, I was going by the hydrologist's charts.
The hydrogeologist will have to address.
I was going by his charts that they, it's been dropping since 2019. I've even brought it up in another meeting. I'm not convicting any of these people that have the wells. They have the rights to have this. I'm talking about, it's our right to take care of it and do it legally to where nobody is going to run short later. That's what this board is supposed to be for. But we always seem to talk about rules and, and amendments and all this kind of crap. We don't talk about water. Excuse my language, but I'm country. Let's talk about water. Let's get it fixed. Let's just not beat around the bush. Mr. Shot is the only one that followed the test permit rules. Out of seven of them, he's the only one that followed it.
In what, in what regard do you mean that?
He's the only one that stopped pumping in a year. He didn't pump after that first year. He's the only one. I've got all this data. Okay? And when they're pumping 1 million feet out a year, acre feet is what it says on some of it.
I haven't been able to look at it yet.
But when they're pumping that out for free, do, do they get charged for, for water through these test wells?
We've already gone over the record.
So, no?
Yeah, apparently they're not.
Okay.
Let me ask a couple.
For seven years, they've been pumping water for free.
Hang on a minute. We, we need, we, we're not even on topic here. Please. Go ahead.
One quick question for you, Greg. You know, talking, and I've read your memorandum. One question I have, does that relieve our particular district from what Chapter 36 says, Section 113 about all the stuff that needs to happen for a permit?
No, not at all. Those statutory requirements are statutory. You have to follow those requirements. You still have to determine whether or not the water's going to be put to beneficial use. Whether or not going to be the other impact, whether or not you're going to be able to achieve desired future conditions. There's a whole list there that you have to determine.
Okay, so given that that still applies, and this applying exactly to our case, not to any other cases or other groundwater districts, but particular to what your memorandum was relative to and to what Kenny County has in our rules. Uh, and you know, I've read those too. There's a bunch of test permit rules, which your memorandum starts to, you know, talk about. And at some point, these applications were deemed administratively complete, I assume. I mean, I haven't seen them because I don't know where they are. I don't have them. I assumed they would be in our package, but they're not. In fact, there's no paperwork in my package that I've seen yet.
There you go.
Well, that's a little bit late. Thank you. Save it for another day.
Come down here, look through the file.
Okay, let's go there. You really want to go there with us, or let's go? Because I was here yesterday asking for that. And I didn't, uh, get offered it. I came here today and I asked for that, and I didn't get offered it. And getting offered it now is, in my opinion, not adequate. So that's that. So the process is, there's a test well applic, the test permit application is deemed administratively complete, and that's fine if that's what that is. And there's pumping reports as required by the rules. All right, and oh, by the way, the applications, because I've read an application, says maximum of a year on the application.
Right.
So the person who did that application should have been well aware that it was a maximum of one year in the application. All right, and then the district should have been well aware that there was a discrepancy between what the rules said and what the app said that probably should have been fixed sometime ago.
About six years ago when I brought it up.
All right, so whatever, that's water under the bridge, and we're trying to fix it. And oh, by the way, I'm talking to Wes, so I don't even know what you said, but you want to repeat it so I can make a valid response to what you said?
Yeah, I brought up the, the 365 day minimum issue in the rules in 2019, whenever I was going through my permit amendments.
So is there some reason they didn't fix that at that point?
You'd have to ask all those board members.
We'd have to ask, you know, the general manager.
No, you'd have to ask those board members because they're the ones that didn't do anything.
Well, that's fine. We'll research that. But anyway, regardless, there would be monthly reports as required by the rules, right? So I haven't seen those either. So maybe they're in what Mr. Menley gave me, but I asked for those. Those haven't been provided either. I assume those would be in our package because it's relevant, in my opinion, to what we're about to try to do on the agenda, which is approve or disprove these permits. Also, and correct me anytime if I'm wrong, after whatever period these monthly pumping things happen, the reports, there's supposed to be a regular permit application, another application that would also need to be administratively complete and judge so. And then there's a whole bunch of rules about announcing it and, and et cetera, and voting on it, and having it on the next meeting and all that stuff. And then we need to consider all these things that Chapter 36 says to ensure that we're acting, you know, in accordance with our duties as a groundwater district to properly manage a resource. So I don't see how it's even, I'll just finish my, you know, soapbox. How is it possible that this can happen today? Have you seen any of those products that I've mentioned, other than the pumping reports that you asked just randomly, though?
Yeah.
Anybody else seen any of these things that I'm mentioning? Matt, have you seen any of these things?
This was done in the.
Okay, so, so in my opinion, if that's the case, and it's not in our package, and this is the first time I'm being offered to look at it along with the whole board, it just seems reasonable that we need to, I don't know, at the very least, table this. And that's, I don't know, Greg, what you think, but I just think it'd be absurd to even consider voting to approve these at this point.
If you want to make a motion to the table, you're welcome to make a motion. There's not a motion on the floor to table at this point.
There's not yet.
There's no motion.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I think it'd be reasonable for you to be able to review the entire record on each of the permits before you vote on it. It's not a reasonable, not an unreasonable request.
I move that we table both of these permit requests.
I second it.
Table, table two.
Motion.
More meaning?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to table. You're doing this on both of these, correct?
Yes, sir.
On both of these, uh, regular permit applications until the next meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign.
I've got a question. So with all this being said, Greg, is there anything that we're doing wrong?
For the record, we had 3, 2, and Director Land abstaining, so we did not take an act.
I don't know that he's abstaining yet. What's your vote?
There's a lot more to this than what y'all got to say.
I know, I just, I don't know what your vote was.
Let him ask his question. Everybody needs to have a chance to be able to talk this whole thing out before it's even a, an inkling of trying to table. And that ain't nowhere near where it's going yet, yet. So the first thing is, is there anything that we're doing that's wrong?
I, I think we have generally followed the rules. I think that the way the rules were drafted and intended within days or weeks after the end of that one year period, the application should have been filed for the regular permit at that time. It should have been handled back in 2019 when that, or 2020, when that, that year ended. That, that clearly didn't happen. There, because the rule said minimum of one year. You know, it really didn't set a deadline by, the intention was pretty clear, in my opinion, that it didn't say you had to have your application filed by this date and you had to stop pumping. With the rule amendments that we have proposed for the board to, to fix that problem, that's, that problem's fixed. So, I'm not going to say what they did was wrong, but I, I think that the intent of the rule was those applications be filed at the end of that year, not seven years later, six years later.
And Greg, would it be reasonable? And Greg, would it be reasonable, in your professional opinion, for us to vote, to approve or disapprove these, I don't know what my vote would even be cuz I haven't had a chance to form my opinion. So, given what you know, that this was just, this just happened, would it be reasonable for this board, or supported by what you know and what you've seen in your long term, would that be smart for us to even think about voting on that?
If I were a board member who hadn't seen any of the material until I got to the meeting, then I probably would, would not, would either abstain or not vote on, or vote against that permit, probably abstain on, I'll vote against that permit. I, I don't know what the other board members have seen or haven't seen.
Okay, well, we can ask them, but yeah, okay, thank you.
I would just like to table until I can seal the information, that's the only reason I'm saying table, I'm not against it or anything like that.
We need, the numbers are in y'all's packet. Or what, these two wells?
Yeah, those are annual amounts, so.
Yeah, so.
Not monthly reports that are required.
Oh no, that's what we calculated from the month.
Well, yeah.
And the totals and everything.
I wanna, I wanna do this, I wanna like to point out, so before we even make a vote on anything, there's some stuff that, that is relevant to this that nobody wants to talk about. Now, where are these wells located, what aquifer they?
Doesn't make any difference.
Yes, it does.
You're gonna have rules, you have to abide by the rules. You oughta hold us up on rules every time.
Listen, I'm not talking about rule, I'm asking where these wells are located, where are they located?
It makes no difference.
Austin Chalk.
Austin Chalk.
That's gonna be part of the package too.
Okay, what I'm asking is Austin Chalk. Now, I'm asking you two, do you think there's a difference in Austin Chalk and the?
That's not the issue.
Yes, it is.
Where there's rules.
To me, to me.
No, we're talking to each other just.
To me, it is, and I'm gonna fix it, uh, make y'all understand it.
Matt, you want, let me.
Let him finish.
You want me to, you want me to give you my opinion on is Austin Chalk related to the Edwards Aquifer?
Yeah.
I don't think we have enough data to decide that.
Yes, you do.
Well.
Jim, are you there?
Well.
Can you hear us?
Jim, I've talked to Jim, and I don't know, we have real ass hydro geologists, ask Mister Claus right here and put him on the hot seat.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask both of them.
Okay.
Because this is relevant.
Okay, so ask him your question.
Because y'all, or everybody in this whole group that y'all have seen the thing.
I don't know what you're talking about group y'all have, Matt.
That's fine. So, y'all think that this, there were these particular wells that have something to do with that spring. So Jim, you give me your opinion on that, and then Vince, you give me your opinion on that. Do you think that uh, these wells have any impact on the spring?
Okay, that's a loaded question, um, certainly the Austin Chalk and the Edwards have different impacts on the spring. Um, correlations that we've seen with the Austin Chalk have not shown correlations, in fact, I've got a slide on this per latter, but the correlations we've seen with the Austin Chalk are very shallow wells and are not showing correlations with the spring. Unlike some of the Edward's wells, Tula Rosa, the city wells, and even the mud wells right next to the springs, those show stronger correlation. Hopefully, if they answer your question, then certainly Vince can shine in here, but I'll keep it short.
Jim, hey, it's Dave Palmer. Can you say that pumping in the Austin Chalk does not affect the spring? Is that uh, valid, given the data that we have now and what we've talked about before? And how we're still working to put monitors in that area, especially those right off the port, you know, near the four hundred acres over there where there's a lot of pumping going on, and there's new meters, not meters, but new equipment going in there to figure out what's going on. Can you wanna, you know, verbally say that definitively pumping in the Austin Chalk doesn't affect the spring?
Um, Director Palmer, that's a great question, thank you for that, and I know you and I have had conversations over the last month. I've got some information talking about the guards and stuff in my slides. Are you sure I did generate a correlation with the equipment that we've got in those wells that are right off six ninety-three that have been the point of discussion? Out of all of the data that we have today, we're not showing a correlation with the Austin Chalk wells and the spring.
Okay, well, I don't know where that data is, and I'll have to look at it at some point.
Director, hang on just a second. I, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Everybody's at the floor here.
I had a question for Greg, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about deadlines for the applicant with the district. Is the district not underneath the app, a deadline to respond on a permit?
Well, we are, um, there are different deadlines applied at different points, and the, it depends on whether, at which point you are in the, in the process, at this point, uh, we are, we don't have any contests filed, so there's no protestants that have been filed. The board may take a position here that either reduces the amount or puts conditions on these permits that would trigger the ability for the applicants to request a contest to case hearing, and that sets another deadline. Uh, right now, the point we're in, we have, I think, if I remember, I, I can't remember that exact part of the statute, because usually when it's not contested, it's not a problem. But uh, the uh, the board has about sixty days after there's a final determination to, to.
Issue permit.
To, to issue the permit, right, so, but, but that really applies when you have a proposal for decision. There's a, there's a hundred and eighty day deadline, if there is a proposal for decision and you have a final hearing that's complete, then, you know, I think the board only has sixty days to make that decision. The, the result of that is, if you don't make that decision, the applicant can come back and file a suit to get a judge to order you to make a decision. So, okay, it's not like if there's, if, the other one, the other option is, if there is a proposal for decision from SOA, if you don't take action on that within a hundred and eighty days, on a hundred and eighty-first day, the SOA decision becomes the permit. So, you know, that, that has a very definite, definitive result of what happens if you don't take action at that time. Here, if you don't take action at the time, they can file a lawsuit to get a ready man dangerous to order you to take action. But you have to, you know.
So, going back to the question, timeout.
No, not timeout, excuse me, you don't control the floor, you do not control the floor, sir, I do.
You changed the total subject, we're talking about hydrology, and now you're talking about a deadline.
And you can go right back to hydrology, we're gonna give you the floor back, but right now you don't have it. Now. Second question.
Suit yourself.
What do we have to bring before this board to consider on whether we grant it or not? What can we bring before and how long can we keep the hearing open for that?
Well, you have, you have, you should have all the, the test permit data, we should have the applications. And you have heard the public comments, so that, that really is all the information that you have to consider in order to make the decision. Now, you can take, honestly, until you have closed the final hearing, you, you could take as long as you need to. So.
It's not changing the topic, you're talking about kicking the can down the road, I wanna know how far we can go, go ahead and ask him anything you want.
Same question, Vince, is, you know, we've had best available science, is there any published uh, sciences says the Austin Chalk has no effect on the other aquifers, it's not really on the spring, but, you know, so Austin Chalk could affect Pin Oak Creek, it could affect other aquifers there. Is there, you know, is there uh, a published study that says that, that you know, or you can, you know, send me?
Well, I was not expecting this tonight.
I know, so, you know, it's not like an easy question, but sorry.
But I'm gonna revisit a couple of different points here. Um, the first of those points, when, when we talk about the best available science and those who have come before me here with the district, one of those things that I recall from one of Dr. Hutchinson's deliverables was the management zones, management zone one, management zone two, management zone three. And, and I believe, and, and I, I don't know the exact quote there, but management zone three, pretty much ninety south, and based on Bill's modeling and Bill's analysis at the time, uh, my apologies, Dr. Hutchinson, I've known him for some time, so, for the, um, um, for the reference there, my apologies, but um, Dr. Hutchinson's uh, description for management zone three was that it was not correlated to the spring, whereas management zone two, some correlation, and management zone one, uh, strongly correlated. Now, when we think about geographically where management zone three is, that is pretty much coexistent where the Austin Chalk um, is present here in Kenny County. Um, I'm not sure exactly, I'm not sure exactly what data points he was looking at to draw that conclusion, but when we look at the Austin Chalk, there's slim, slim sliver that does come above ninety, but for the majority of that formation, we are looking south of ninety. Um, and my understanding is that's where we do have Austin Chalk wells here within Kenny County. Now, um, going back to the SOQ that I submitted, um, one of the things that I highlighted in that um, statement of qualifications, uh, was my expertise specifically as it relates to the Edwards and Trinity Aquifers. I've spent a lot of time along the Valcones Fault Zone, this is all the way on the northern extent or edge up in Bell County, which we're on the complete opposite end of where we terminate down here in Kenny County. Spent a lot of time in Barton Springs, Hays County, Travis County, Williamson County. Just last year, was able to uh, deliver report to um, four GCDs within that area where we covered the hydrostratigraphy from Bell County down into Trav- Williamson, Travis, and then out towards Hays County as it relates to the Edwards and Trinity Aquifers. Based on my knowledge, my understanding of the aquifers outside of Kenny County, the Austin Chalk is not correlated to the Edwards. Now, with that said, there is the, there is the opportunity for there to be displacement along fault plains where we do have some connectivity, but my understanding of the system down here in Kenny County is it's not the same Valcones Fault Zone that we see elsewhere along the I thirty-five board where that promotes that type of behavior. The other thing to consider as it relates to this specific point is we have the Austin Chalk, it's that shallow wedge-like formation that extends south towards the river here, and then we have about five hundred feet of semi-permeable to impermeable uh, layers relatively speaking. When I say that, I'm talking about those um, formations that we typically refer to as an aquitard. So, they greatly prohibit the flow of groundwater in that vertical direction. And so, with that said, there still is some insignificant connectivity between the two, but as hydrogeologists, we usually look at that as a negligible number or a negligible kind of rounding error at the end of the day. So, that's my long-winded way of answering your question, I haven't spent enough time specifically in Kenny County. I've read all the literature, right now there's four different conceptual models out there for how groundwater flows through the system. And through none of those have I seen a direct reference to the Austin Chalk being directly correlated to the Edwards.
Right, but your proposal for work includes all these different things, right, that, you know, and, and that's what we were waiting on so anxiously when Dr. Hutchinson was employed here for the model, and obviously we're in dire need of, well, you could argue whether you need a model or not, but anyway, your work continues.
Yes, sir.
And the data collection continues, so in my mind, it's premature to make these assumptions, like I, you know, I wouldn't say to you or to Jim, they're linked, you know, for sure, you're gonna find it, you gotta do more data. And, you know, if you wanna say they're definitely not linked, or it's insignificant if they were linked, you know, that's fine too. But at this point, you know, that's verbal discussion, that's not something that's um, organized in a product that's, you know, um, presentable and peer reviewable and, and usable, really. That's my opinion.
I'll go with that, I'll take you off the hook, that's what I think.
I think what I heard was there was nothing in any of the four models that you looked at showing vertical transmissivity between Austin Chalk and Edwards. Is that an incorrect characterization?
Within the literature specifically cited to Kenny County, yes, elsewhere in the, uh, elsewhere, there's strong opposing viewpoints that they are not connected.
Is the Austin Chalk, is it above the Edwards Aquifer?
The Austin Chalk, it's the surface outcrop south of ninety that extends south towards the river there, so it's gonna be above. It's a younger formation.
There's a layer between that and the.
We have about five hundred feet, we have what uh, is locally referred to a, as the Eagle Ford. And then we have the Beuta Limestone, and then under that, it's the Grayson Shell. And it's that Grayson Shell layer specifically that i- is viewed as an aquitard, there's no aquifer potential. Um, the Beuta Limestone, a little bit of aquifer potential, so maybe semi-confining, but then even that Eagle Ford shell, once again, we're looking at confining and semi-confining units, so that package of five hundred feet makes it pretty hard to transmit water from the Austin Chalk down into the Okers.
So, so Vince, why didn't Dr. Hutchinson make zone two include all those wells that are in the Austin Chalk right there, south of ninety, next to the fort, their zone two?
I'm not sure on the exact cross plots that he used in the data.
I don't know either, yeah, well, yeah.
I can tell you what he said. He, the only thing he had to use was rainfall data and well levels, whenever he came up with those three zones. That was the only thing that he used, rainfall data and the water level.
Love to take your word for that, but.
That's what he said, I'm just telling you what he said.
Where's Jan Rock?
Um, it, it depends where we are in the county, um, it's shallower in the northern half of the county. It's closer to land surface, and then it actually outproves in some portions of the northern and northeastern part of the county. As we start heading south towards ninety, the formation starts plunging, and it goes to a great depth as you get south of ninety in Bracketville here.
Okay, what feeds the spring? Which one? Since they're always trying to say, well, this one doesn't relate, this one doesn't relate, which one feeds the spring?
So there's multiple springs here in any county, uh, if we're specifically referring to those here in Bracketville. My understanding through all the literature is that is from the Edwards, what's happening is you have water coming from depth. It's uh, under artesian pressure, it finds pathways and vertically migrates upward.
Vince, is our Edwards Aquifer connected to the other Edwards Aquifer, or do we have our own pool?
So, there is a Kenny pool, which relates to how groundwater flows on the eastern edge of the county.
I'm just messing.
It's all one aquifer, but water flows in different ways as you cross it. Now, Jim does have a graphic back there I found last time I was here behind that. Um, uh, queue. And I actually appreciate this because this kind of shows how water has to, that artesian pressure has to work its way up through those vertical pathways, and that's when we get that spring flow through that artesian pressure.
Thanks, man.
Which is fed from the Edwards.
Thank you. And so Matt, my comment to you would be, even if the data, the best available science, even if there was a, like a thing that says they're not linked, and this is for you to decide relative to being able to do this, you know, in your mind, you need to decide, is it reasonable for us to deny or pass these permits with nothing in our packets that's sitting right there as the first thing any of us have got? That's my point, really, it's not really, it's not really the hydrology point, it's the point.
Are you done?
Of how that works, no, I'm talking to Matt, so that's what I'm saying. And I understand your point, that you're saying, you know, whatever, they're not linked, and that's fine, maybe they're not. And the data will prove that eventually, cuz I'm sure there's a lot of people that wanna know that answer, and that's something that, that we'll get to. But even if we had that answer right now, in, you know, in the format it should be in, in my mind, that's not the relevant issue here at all, the relevant issue is, is it prudent for this groundwater district to move on this item given what each of us don't know now?
You done?
Sure. Okay, for now.
Yeah, well, you get the floor again when you get a chance. So, what we have before us is.
What did you do, Matt?
He didn't vote, and please don't interrupt me again.
Well, I don't know.
I, I'm calling where we're at right now, sir. Sit there and be quiet for a minute.
Did you vote, Matt, or did you?
I have got the floor, you do not.
I do.
No, you don't, cuz you're not the presiding officer. So sit there and be quiet for a minute.
I don't know what Matt did, what did you do?
I have the floor right now, so sit there and be quiet. Now, what we have up before us, what we have.
Sit here and be quiet.
Nothing, don't.
To talk?
Then don't, we'll just call the sheriff, we'll end the meeting and we'll just go, all go home.
To talk, Wes?
No, you have the right to have the floor when I give it to you, now I have it, I wanna talk, it's my turn. That's why I asked you if you were done, you said you were, then you wanted to interrupt.
Suit yourself, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, what we have before us is discussion of possible action on the limestone permit, what you brought up is whether or not we should act on it or not. That's what you brought up.
Table both of them.
Yeah, I second it.
That's right. And Matt never voted.
We can ask.
So if you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna finish the vote.
Favor of that motion. There were two votes against it and there was one person that didn't vote.
That's right.
Is that an abstention or you just didn't?
In minutes, I would reflect as an abstention, yes.
I, I already called it as an abstention and, and somebody else said it wasn't. Anyway, what we have before us is whether or not we're gonna act on that. What we need is to determine whether or not this is detrimental. We don't have anything that says that it isn't. It's a minimal amount. This district was considering a rule that you wouldn't even have to go to the permit process for fifty acre foot of water. Two years ago. Just give it to them.
That's the whole.
Recommendation, recommendation of the hydrologist as you guys said, so. These guys have complied, these guys have complied with, with everything that they've needed to do. They've requested their regular.
Says to Wes, do you?
The rules, Director. You ask about whether this was done. It had to be, it had to be administratively complete before they ever got a test permit, Director.
No, it needs to be administratively complete when they do the regular permit, Wes.
Yep, and it was determined to be administratively complete by the general manager.
Since when?
Oh, I'm sorry. Where in the rules did you have to be told that?
Okay. Maybe I don't.
Wh- wh- where was your, what was in the rules?
You know, just keep talking.
My point is the rules never were followed. One year or complete a task. None of it was followed up on. That's all I'm trying to say is nobody followed up on that.
This is plain ad nauseam. That the rules said it was for a minimum of three hundred sixty-five days. It did not have anything in it. We have changed that to close it.
Who tested it?
We've changed it to close it. And that's not good enough. They, they still aren't compliant. Okay, I don't care.
Well, where's the fine?
What's the pleasure of the board? What do you want to do? I'm gonna move that we, uh, I'm gonna move that we grant the Langston regular permit.
I don't agree at all.
You don't have to agree. I'm making a motion.
We already made a motion.
Yep.
Was voted on and then y'all.
That's right.
Trying to change this to suit you.
No, Director, you didn't take action. You didn't take action because you didn't have.
Didn't take action. We just voted on it.
That's right.
And then you're trying to change it, just like you do everything else.
No, I didn't change anything.
I'm sure she's saying that.
We took a vote. We took a vote and then he changed it.
The, no, the vote fails.
No, it was three to two and one didn't.
And to take action, take action by this board requires four votes.
Okay, that's fine. But he's done that every time we do something.
I hadn't done anything, Director.
My voice and cane. You watched the August twenty-first meeting we had whenever we voted Mr. Gaines off. You've done this every time, Wes. When somebody doesn't vote to suit you, you go to mumbling and grumbling and changing the subject cause you think you're the president. You're just a little man. Matt?
Why are you putting your finger in my face?
Okay, you sat right there and lied to me. Y'all lied to me. You sat right there and listed Mr. Gaines, the twenty-first. Watch the meeting again. And you voted and then he went to grumbling again, just like he did just then and changed.
Called me a liar twice now?
I'm not calling you a liar.
Don't do it. You've done twice. You just said you, I lied. Did everybody else hear that?
Right there and said you didn't.
Directors.
Watch the meeting.
Directors, that's enough. That's enough.
Watch the meeting. Y'all need to watch this meeting.
That is absolutely enough. Nobody has changed anything.
Went to grumbling and he changed his vote.
Director, nobody has changed any votes.
Watch the meeting.
Now, I have moved to grant the Langston regular permit. Do I have a second?
Can I comment on something?
Absolutely. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna open the discussion anyway.
The whole reason that I was for tabling it is this is what I've got. This may be a failure on my part. It may be a failure on somebody else's part for not doing enough research. I'm a human, okay? This, what we need to do in the future, whether we're a board member or we work here or whatever else, start and stop date, everything else. To where we know exactly where this well's at, what aquifers and have it all listed here. To me, this doesn't, this, to me, this doesn't spell the whole story. Maybe my fault for not doing the research. Maybe I need to come down here and do the research and build the whole thing and put it in the director's packet. But that's why I wanted to table it. But after seeing this and knowing that they've, they've gone through the proper channels, which I was never against, I'm all for another vote.
And I'm gonna say that, so. To make this relevant. My main, my main concern, this should be always my concern, is whether or not something's affecting this spring. Or the city of Bracketville's water, whether we have, uh, authority over the city or not. Now. The science is.
And you can shake your head, you can laugh, you can giggle, you can get down on the floor and wiggle around, do whatever you want. Have a different change of, it doesn't make a difference.
No good.
Yes, sir, it does.
Make your point.
These wells have no effect on that spring.
Can't say that.
Yes, I can.
That's why it's in the shape of thin.
No, sir, it's not. Y'all can keep saying that all day long. It doesn't change anything. It doesn't change the fact. It doesn't change anything, but you want it to.
Like, just go ahead, but, you know, go ahead. You got the floor.
So. There is no direct effect. There is none. And I don't see why, at all, that anybody here should say anything about these two wells because they're in the Austin chalk. That are gonna have anything affect on anything else, cause they don't.
They affect the Pino?
That's not what I'm talking about. What did it just say?
It's not all lost more spring. It's all the other springs.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir. You can keep changing things as much as you want to try to change the outcome.
I'm just trying to discuss it with you, Matt, but, you know, you can read what I'm saying.
I'm gonna second, I'm gonna second Wes's motion. Based on that, it's a second.
All right, I got another question then when I get out of the floor, Wes.
Discuss it.
Hey, so the motion is to approve the permit as, uh, submitted, right? Have you seen the, have you seen it?
It did, that's irrelevant to me. What you're talking, what you're talking is irrelevant.
Have you seen the permit that we're about to vote on to approve?
What I, what I use is our lawyer's approval on it.
Right, have you seen it? Have you seen it, Randy?
Well, I know what it's all about. One of them is mine.
No, but we're not talking about yours. We're talking about Langston. Have you seen the permit? You have. You're the only one who has. Janelle, have you seen it?
Yes, Director Palmer, I've seen it.
Okay.
Came into our office.
So I haven't seen it. How much are we, how much are you guys voting on? What's the acre feet that you're about to try to approve? How many acre feet?
It's fifty acre feet is my understanding, Director. It's right over here.
I haven't seen it and it's too late.
Oh, it's too late. No, it's too late. Too late. Can't look at it now.
No, I'm not gonna look at it now. We're talking, you know, because that's ridiculous.
Oh.
And I do have a question for you, Mr. Ellis. If it's for fifty acre feet and the pumping, this annual thing says those numbers are like. You look at it, it was like one point seven, one point two, one point two, one point four, one point six. And then last year it was six acre feet a year. How do you approve a fifty acre foot permit if what was pumped was six? Cause it says in the rules and I can read it, five point oh two, if my memory serves me. And you could clarify that, please. Maybe it's not five point oh two, but it's in here where it says something relative to.
A point oh two is permit amendments.
Come up and talk to you. That's funny. It's not funny. This is not funny at all because you guys know it's not funny.
Your performance is fine.
Uh, please, no comments from the audience. This is, this was.
You can call the sheriff on that too, but anyway, it says something about you can't approve more than was tested. Is that not right, Greg?
I'm looking at that.
Actually, what I've read in there is said that we can approve less than is requested, more than is requested. Or the amount that's requested.
That was tested.
Well, I don't know the section that you're referring to. All I'm telling you is what I've read through. We can, we can grant more or less than the amount asked for.
Greg?
I'm, I'm trying to find that section.
Okay. It's rule three point oh four. The amount granted for a permit may not, a regular permit may not exceed the maximum amount requested and tested for under the test permit. Rule three point oh four. Does that not apply or what's your opinion on that?
When you do a pump test, you don't pump four hundred acre foot of water.
I'm not asking you, Wes. I'm asking Greg. Last instance, three point four does read the amount granted for a regular permit may not exceed the maximum amount requested. And tested for, not pumped, but tested for under the test permit. The applicant submission must contain a written request for public hearing on a form provided the difference, so. Um, the amount that was tested for under, under these conditions is the maximum amount you can grant on this permit.
So if they test for fifty acre foot, you can't grant a hundred acre feet.
Correct.
But you can grant less.
Correct. And what's the definition of tested for? What is that? What does that mean?
They wanted.
Tested for is what they pumped or tested for is what they just put on the piece of paper or?
Believe that's, that's described underneath the test well permit rules to operate the well for its intended purpose. That does not mean they have to pump that, that amount out of, out of the ground every year. When a pump test is designed, you make sure that the withdrawal rate is covered underneath the test. Cause you can't pump out the whole amount to do that. We do have a motion and a second on the floor to grant the Langston regular permit. Do we have some further discussion on the matter?
I think we're waiting for Mr. Ellis's response on what three oh four requires.
I'm trying, well, three, I mean, three or four states that it has to be the amount tested for. I'm looking at.
Uh, how's that determined, I guess, is my question, Greg? You know, what do you mean?
Of what you fill out on the test permit. It's very specific and tested for under the test permit.
What I received had no amount on it, that they were allowed to pump. That's the problem.
Under, uh, which rules is?
I don't know what permit you're referring to, Director, but if you.
I got all the permits from them on all the, the law.
But I know, if you will let me finish, please. I know of one.
I had the floor. You interrupted me.
I have one that I know of that went into effect before there were ever any testing rules this district even had in place. And that may be the one that you're referring to. I'm not sure.
The problem is if you don't, if you're gonna have these rules, let's follow. That's the whole problem right here. They weren't followed. I'm not denying any of these people, any of their water. But whenever we don't do our job or the past boards didn't do their job. We need to correct it.
When are we gonna do that, Director?
That's what we're sitting here discussing it about, isn't it? Well, I thought it was.
Nobody seems to want to have committee meetings to address the rules or the bylaws or anything else, so just wanna know when you wanna meet. I have no problem with it.
This is not my free time job, if you wanna know.
Hey, Wes, let's talk about that while we're waiting on Greg. Doesn't the committee chairman, uh, call the committee and say, let's have a meeting on this date? I don't think, what do you want, like, me to call you and tell you when a committee should meet when I'm just like.
Oh, you want me, you want me, you want me just, you want me just throw up an agenda? See who shows up?
Committee chairman should organize a meeting.
Well, why haven't you had a draft management committee?
I was on the draft management.
Well, you hadn't had a meeting yet.
Because you changed the draft committee to the whole board.
Uh-huh, and why haven't you set agenda?
I don't know. Am I the chairman?
Why not? Yes.
Wasn't made the chairman.
I didn't take you, I didn't, I didn't take you off as chairman. Did I tell you I took it away from you? I didn't take it away from you.
It's a whole new committee.
Yes, and you still chair it.
Well, that's news to me. Thank you. I'll, uh.
Never changed, Director. I never told you I took your director, your chair away. Never stripped you of that.
Uh, you ended the committee.
I changed your committee to all the board members and that's all.
That's, okay, fine.
Okay, answer your, to answer your question, I'm looking at, at rule three point oh three, E three.
In our rules.
In your rules, where it states that the, during that year, they can either perform a pump test acceptable to the district. Which usually is like a thirty-six hour pump test. Or. They may operate for one year. This is minimum of one year. And the district then is supposed to observe, monitor and inspect all phases of the construction of the pumping test. If the pumping rate causes detrimental impacts in the landowner's wells based on spring, base spring flow or. The aquifer, the district shall have the authority to cause a decrease in pumping or stoppage of pumping until recharge has, has occurred. The pumping may be resumed at a reduced rate once conditions are normalized. So there's a process here where you can, you can adjust the pumping over time. Um, I, I don't believe a, a separate, like thirty-six hour pump test was done on the Langston well. Is that, is that correct? Okay, so here the test would be on, I would think the test would be on the amount that was actually pumped during the period of time. That we're seeing whether or not there's been any other impacts. If they didn't pump the full fifty acre feet during that year. It's gonna be difficult to show what the impacts of pumping fifty acre feet are gonna be. So my rec, my recommendation would be, because they did pump the full thirty, the full fifty acre feet. We should either go back and perform a thirty-six hour pump test and have some analysis done, what the impact might be on other wells. Rather than approve a full fifty acre foot permit at this point. Cause I mean, the, 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 and one of the downsides of this process is you're telling people. I want you to pump fifty acre feet for a year, whether you need it or not. And that's a, that's a bad idea. I mean, that's, that sounds very wasteful. So, um, I, I think because of the amount of water that they needed to use, it's so small. It would have made better sense for them to do a thirty-six hour pump test and give us those results.
But they, that underneath the rules, that's the option for the applicant, is it not?
It is, yes.
So that's not an option currently for us to determine as the board.
Right, but, but because the rule says.
I tend to agree. I like pump tests. I, that's why I went with one. I wanted to know whether it affected my neighbor or not.
Right, uh, because the rule says we cannot grant for permit for more than was tested for. Um, I think we're gonna have a hard time saying that we tested four fifty acre feet when that was then about never pumped and there was no thirty-six hour pump test.
Conversely, I think we're gonna, in a tough spot and I granting it due to the fact that we can't show any detriment for it either. And we were contemplating a rule for that amount is not even being permitted two years ago. This board was contemplating that. Fifty acre feet is really significant.
I can't comment on, on whether or not, uh, fifty acre feet has any impact on, on that, on stuff.
Well, the purpose of this is so we could, we could determine that and, you know. You're saying that we can't, so we need to address those rules to make, make it where we can determine that whenever we're doing the testing phase.
I agree.
We, we need to change that. Anyway, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the Langston regular permit. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. You abstaining? Okay. Motion carries.
Can we make a note of what we just talked about? Need to make a note of what we just talked about.
Make a note.
On the fifty acre feet?
Yeah.
Can you remember that?
Yeah.
Cause I don't know if I got fifty acre, okay, fifty acre feet. Thirty-six hour. To complete.
By the way, let me mention this real quick. I had this conversation with the president earlier today. After you've issued a permit. If it turns out that information was incorrect or circumstances changed or. that information was incorrect, or circumstances changed, or, or whatever, and you find out that that permit is have, that, that pumping is having an unreasonable offsite impact, you have the ability to come back and open that permit back up and amend it on the board zone motion. You don't have to wait for an application, you don't have to wait for renewal. So you have the ability to make adjustments over time as easily necessary in order to prevent damage to, between property owners, or the ability to achieve a desired future condition.
So hypothetically, in the event the use that we permitted lowered a neighbor's well, the board on its own motion can come back in and address that.
That's right.
Okay, number five, discussion possible action shot, regular permit.
Mr. Ellis, if I could, real quickly, address the guitar case.
Please.
That was right up earlier. I can't remember what year this was. Many years ago, the Huntsville County District had come up with a, a limitation, I think it was 64,000 acre feet per year for the entire permitted amount they were going to issue. About half that county was farmed, about the other half the county was, was ranchland. And the farmers and cities took up the entire 64,000 acre feet of available water through their permits. The ranchland, of course, were operating off of exempt use domestic and livestock wells. A rancher presumably pumped whatever amount they needed to for their livestock through exempt use wells. When City of El Paso came out to Huntsville County looking to buy some water, and one of the people they approached was the Guitar Ranch. The Guitar said, we've got lots of land and very little demand for water, so, and we have lots of water beneath our land, so we'd like to sell you some. And when they went to the district and said, we wanna get a permit to sell this water to El Paso, the district said, sorry, all 64,000 acre feet's been permitted. If they want a permit, they're gonna have to go to one of the people that has a permit and buy one of theirs. So that led to a lawsuit, and during the lawsuit, the discussion was, what is a historic use permit? Is it just the amount? Or is it also the purpose of use? Is it being, is there a historic element to it? Does that include what its purpose of use was? And, and there's lots of other arguments. There's an Eighth Court of Appeals opinion that came out that included discussion of all those other issues, some of which is still good law today, in my opinion. The Eighth Court, the, the final decision of the Eighth Court was that the amount was all that mattered. And that portion of their decision was, was appealed in petition of Spring Court, Texas. Spring Court heard that case, and in its opinion said, no, it's not just the amount, it's also the purpose of use. Presumably also the place of use, because this was talking about exporting outside the district at the same time. The way I read the guitar permit is you cannot amend a historic use permit to change the amount, the place of use, or the purpose of use, and keep the historic use protection. It has to be treated the same as you would any other regular permit. So that's what we have done in the past. I have brought.
It's the way I viewed it too.
I have brought a set of rules to this board to, to implement that opinion of the Guitar case. And the board failed to adopt those rules. That was 2019, I think.
Yeah, I believe so.
And, and the rules led to lots of controversy. We had several different attorneys in here telling, you know, me how wrong I was about my interpretation on both sides. We had one saying I wasn't, you know, being very tight.
No, you were getting beat up on both sides. My mom was beating you up too.
So I, I think, you know, yeah, I think that puts me in pretty much the right position. Well, I'm getting hit from both sides.
He didn't like my interpretation either.
So it's not that you can't amend the historic use permit, it's that you cannot amend and keep its historic use protection. So if this permit is approved, that, that, I think, what, what's the total amount? Mr. Shaw, on the, on the change you're making?
80.
80 acre feet. If I said 15, I knew that was wrong. The 80 acre feet that's currently part of the historic use permit would now become a regular permit. It would not be, would not be, have any of the other protections issued to a historic or existing use permit. So that would be, that would be the impact of the motion.
And just for enlightenment of the crowd, since this was brought up during public comment, that's exactly what happened with my amendment.
Yes, it is. I, I do recommend again, we take a look at those rules and see if we can't get some rules in, in place that makes that clear. There's no question about what happens on these historic and existing use permits.
Can you send those to us, Greg, so we can review them again and revisit that?
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. We need to get that, we need to get those in place, uh, just so it is clear that that's, that's what occurs when you do that on a existing historic use permit. Okay, what else we got on this one?
Before we get any farther, Mr. Shaw, shouldn't you, uh, remove yourself from this room, given conflict of interest?
No, that's, no, he, he has to abstain from voting. He cannot participate in either the discussion or the vote on it. Absolutely. He has to, he has to recuse.
So there is a conflict of interest.
It's his permit, yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, absolutely. He doesn't have to remove himself from the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's the applicant. He has a right to be here.
Absolutely.
Okay, if you interpret.
If we had an executive session.
That works.
Honestly, if we had an executive session about potential litigation over this, as a board member, he still has a right to attend that executive session. We would ask him not to, because it's kind of pointless of having an executive session, talking about litigation with Mr. Shaw, with him sitting in the room.
Right.
Well, the AG's already issued an opinion on that many, many years ago, that board members have a right to attend executive sessions, whether they are involved in the litigation or not.
But this isn't an executive session.
That's not. This is a regular board meeting, and he has every right to be with. He doesn't have a right to, he doesn't have a right to participate.
It's just state of Texas's opinion, but.
I, I don't. Well, the video I watched, Greg, the video I watched on it, if, if, if an actor in the decision has a direct financial potential for reward, given the, the decision, even, you know, me looking at him and him, you know, hearing what I have to say, and giving me the evil eye if I happen to disagree, could affect the, could affect the outcome of the vote, and because there's a conflict of interest, the person that has that conflict of interest should, and then I watched the video, I could send it to you. My interpretation of that video was the best policy is this person, in this case, Director Shaw, should not be in the room, because it could be interpreted that if they are, they're affecting the outcome of the vote that could result in a direct financial reward to that same person.
I, I don't, I don't think.
If you don't agree, that's fine.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't agree. I do not think we have any ability to remove anybody from this room.
Okay.
Then we can, we can have executive sessions, in which case, board meets privately.
So can he vote on it, or?
No, we can't vote on it.
Well, I think you can vote on it.
You don't understand?
Mr. Shaw?
We've said it already.
Mr. Shaw, don't discuss anything. Don't participate in this discussion anyway.
See, because there's a pressure right there. I feel intimidated by him giving me an hassle.
Yeah, because you're, you keep, you keep repeating the same thing, even though it's been answered to you. He can be here. So quit belaboring the point, and let's move on.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? What else you wanna talk about, Tom?
I've got a question. Are you raising the amount that you was asking? Okay.
So I got some comments, yeah. So in the same argument, Mr. Ellis, uh, given this, the Shaw test well, Shaw Ranch LTD. And again, you guys are assuming that the package is correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the package is pretty involved, let's just say that. Uh, whatever, assume it's correct, I guess. But according to this, uh, one acre foot was pumped in 2024, and 15.82 acre feet was pumped in 2023. I don't really know, you had mentioned Director Shaw before that this well.
I can't comment.
This is, okay, that's true, and I'm not asking him for comment. But this is a different process too than the test well that we just was voted on. This is, uh, and, uh, what do you call it?
This is an amendment.
Amendment. Right, you're amended, you're amending an existing, and, you know, and then it says vaguely in here, oh, well, if you're amending your historic use permit, you gotta do the test well process or whatever. So I assume the form's the same, but it's not the same as what we just did. This is an amendment.
Right.
Which is a different, uh, animal, let's say.
All, all, all of being changed here is the purpose of use.
Okay, right.
Or 80 acre feet of an existing and historic use permit.
He's already got the permit, he's already got the water.
So do you have to do test? Do you, why would you have to do monthly reports?
That's a great question.
Because that's the way the rule is written.
Do monthly reports? Do the, does, do the monthly reports apply to an amendment where you're changing your historic use to a?
If all you're changing, unless, unless somebody can explain to me how changing the purpose of use from irrigation to anything else affects the aquifer differently when the water comes out, I, I don't understand what the purpose of that would be.
So and do our rules, uh, clearly state that, or do we have some work to do?
Part of what the recommended changes I was trying to.
One of the problems is, one of the problems is it says amendments will be treated as test well, as a test permit. And that's, that's one of the problems that we've had, because it should be ministerial, and when, when you're only changing the use, you're not changing the place that you're using it at, you're not changing the amount that you're using it at.
We've known that for, when did you say you proposed those in 20, what, 19?
I think it was 2019 when we proposed it, and they, and they failed to, to be adopted.
All right, so, so this is gonna, are you, well, I can't ask him, so is, is is this water being pumped now? It's not, right? Because, I mean, last year, one acre foot was pumped. So is 80 acre feet now gonna be used for some other unknown beneficial purpose, so we don't have proof?
It is a permit, it is a permitted amount up to 80 acre feet.
Right.
He may use two acre foot, yet he up to
Or whatever.
Up to 80 acre feet.
That's it for industrial use.
Janelle, correct me if I'm wrong about this. I believe that the purpose of use here is for dust control on a solar farm.
Yes.
So it's not to be sold or whatever, it's to be, the applicant specifically asked to use this water for dust control on a solar farm.
Also could.
Yeah, well, that's news to me. I didn't see.
Okay, on the initial test permit application, he had to do on this, the other one too, for the regular permit, it was for the dust control industrial, uh, but also, um, it continues to use it for irrigation. Irrigation, livestock as well. And it would be the same amount, because it includes industrial, which when you get into industrial commercial of water, it's $10 per acre foot, whereas for irrigation, it's a dollar per acre foot.
Okay, so does the person, they charge 80 acre feet industrial, or they just get charged, they just tell you what it is?
This, this is 80 acre feet of industrial, right? Yeah.
All right, well, I, I'll just go on the record that I don't see how it's even possible that we're voting on any of this. It just seems outrageous that we haven't even seen the paperwork on it, and we're supposed to just take somebody's word that, oh, it's good, say, yea or nay. Uh, that blows me away.
Yeah, this is a simple amendment. He already has a permit.
It's not simple.
Yeah, actually it is.
All right, well, I don't think it is.
Okay. He's changing the use. That's it. Nothing else. It's about as simple as it can get.
And again, this is an Austin chalk well.
Well, the, the use is already permitted, so all we're doing is changing 70 acre, or 80 acre feet of use.
Changing the title on it. It's not anything changing, it's just the same thing, correct? It's just changing the name of what the permit's for.
It's changing the use.
This will be changing two things about this permit. 80 acre feet of it would no longer be historic permit, it would be converted to a regular permit. And that 80 acre feet could then be used for industrial purposes of dust control on a solar farm. Uh, so, so purpose of use would change. That's it.
Because it doesn't go out of county, so it's not.
No.
It's not changing anything except for historical to, to the regular use.
There's one other point that should be made on this as well, Director. When you lose that classification from existing historic underneath the rules that we have, and you become a regular permit, you lose priority, you become the first to be cut off before existing historic use. So when you get that permit classification, you're also taking a lower permit.
Right. That's, okay. That's fine.
Just, just want you to understand that, that's all.
Without the information, we didn't know that.
So have you seen any of that, Perry? You haven't seen it? Blake, you haven't seen it? Matt, you haven't seen it?
But I'm glad he told me that I needed to know, because, you know, if I can't see it, I can't.
Matt went through it whenever I did my amendment.
I already know.
We have a motion.
We made a motion?
Nope, nobody's made one. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motions and grant it.
And I will second that motion to grant the right, shot regular permit. Any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Want to abstain?
Yep. All right, gentlemen, what you want to do now?
Moving to the next item.
No, I don't have a copy of September 30th special board meeting minutes, I don't think.
Uh, number six, discussion possible action approval of the minutes. There you go, Greg, you don't have to do none.
I got the one for.
I'm fixing to take a recess here, as soon as these get over with. Bottom?
Do you have it in here?
I don't have it. I got the regular ones. I don't have the special meeting ones. Can I keep this, or?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes. Second's been made by Director Plan. Motion's been made by Director Ward. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Director Millie, you abstaining? Okay. Motion carries. What is the day to date? Let's take a 10-minute recess. Let's go, meeting back to order.
I can't let it.
Where's Director Millie at?
Thank you for going home.
Okay.
I have the impression that you may have.
Okay. Oh, this has left the building. Okay. Minutes of the special meeting of the governing board of the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District. We pass the first set of minutes. Let's do the second. Anybody got any discussion or questions or corrections, additions?
Make a motion.
It was two different minutes. Two different sets of minutes. We got the first one.
So make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the special board meeting minutes by Director Plan. Seconded by Director Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Let the record reflect, Director Millie has left. Uh, just, Janelle, number seven, general manager report.
Okay, since the last board meeting, we've not had any applications or, um, exempt permits. Domestic livestock applications coming in, it's not permanent, but. Since the, this fiscal year from October first through September thirtieth, there was a total of twelve applications, for example, received. I believe two, two of those, I think, were dry hoes. Um, the GMA's, GMA ten meeting was today, I did not intend it. The answer's there, click me on what happened. Um, on November sixth will be the, uh, GMA seven meeting in Sonora. That's that all I have to report.
Any discussion, any questions? Do you check the water development board drought index and aquifer monitoring data? Mr. Claus, you were gonna give us an update at this portion of the meeting?
So I prepared a memo, um, I, I placed the memo on top of everyone's binders in the morning. This, this highlights where we are today as it relates to the various, uh, task authorizations or initiatives that were authorized. Um, what we have here is task one, which is recommendations for rule changes. Today, that's just been a general review of the rules that was actually performed under the initial on-call agreement. Um, as you can see from this, um, we will begin a focused, uh, rule change evaluation here in early November. This was recommended, uh, for many of the, the, the reasons and points that were discussed tonight, um, and I look forward to providing our recommendations. Um, we're looking at, um, an early to mid-December delivery date on that draft report there. Um, and then task two, support desired future conditions and joint planning, um, once again, having kind of what is completed to date here. As Janelle just mentioned, that includes attending the GMA ten meeting today in San Antonio on my way down here, also plan to attend the meeting in Sonora. Um, a lot of our work in progress to date has been related to synthesizing all the various, uh, pieces of, of literature, that's the tech memos that Dr. Hutcheson have provided and developed over the years. That's the explanatory reports, the district's management plan, kind of in all of the above there as it relates to fully wrapping our head around um, the philosophy as it's currently relates to the DFC. Um, how we've gotten to where we are in terms of the past three joint planning cycles, and then we started to begin to synthesize and formulate our thoughts in terms of how we're gonna prepare the memo as it specifically relates to pumping here within Kenny County, specifically within GMA seven. And then we plan to present those findings to the district at its December meeting, um, so that will be some sort of draft delivery report. Um, and then we'll need to present those findings to GMA seven at their January meeting. So we are up against it in terms of a timeline here. Um, we will have to move quickly on that, but what that gives us is about six weeks from here, or from tonight, to get that thing wrapped up in, in front of the board, at least in some sort of draft for the December meeting. Hopefully with an action item to vote on which direction, um, the district would like to go as it relates to what it believes sustainable pumping is as it relates to the mag.
Do, do you think that you might need any additional time outside of the monthly meeting for that? Where we might need to have a special meeting prior to the monthly meeting for that, depending on it?
The presentation that I plan to give is going to be around twenty minutes, um, so that will.
It's in a monthly meeting, no problem.
But that will then lead to potentially forty minutes of discussion amongst the board members in terms of uh, questions for me, things that we've seen, observed, um, recommendations that we may have as it relates, but then at the end of the day, that will have to then dovetail into a meeting for there to be some sort of formal board action to provide Janelle with direction at the next GMA meeting.
Well, I just wanted to mention that, you know, it might be preferable for the board to have the opportunity to talk to it prior to the action item.
Yes, sir.
That way they could, they could do it at a special meeting and get more involved in it, ask more questions, have more time.
Yes, sir.
If it was their pleasure, it'd be up to them, not me, but.
I, I'd be more than happy to do that, and.
I, i- if it was something that would require that, I wanted to find out if it did, cause it, you know, might push the board to decide to do that.
Based on my limited experience here so far, I, I would assume that's a good idea.
Okay.
Um, so, some of those next steps as it relates to task two, um, we've been recreating some of the data that Dr. Hutcheson, um, provided and created over the years. Um, we're gonna have a sit down with him hopefully next week to go over some of those, uh, methodologies and approaches that he's employed um, since working for the district. Um, so that's the update on task two, task three, this is the review and finalization of groundwater pumping and water level data sets. Um, so we've got all of the, the pumping data from Jim, we're synthesizing all of that information turning the, turning it into GIS shape files that we're able to use in our mapping applications. Um, we've started taking a look at water levels, there's some things that, um, Jim and I have already spoken on specifically related to that point, that's a work in progress. That's one of those that's ongoing for the next six months as data kind of rolls in as we continue to work on task four, which is updating the conceptual model, we'll be able to fine tune that some. Um, but just wanted to make sure we were providing you an update and kind of highlighting what some of those key milestones are that we're working up against as it relates to um, coming into the, the end of this calendar year here in December and some of those decision points that have to take place in order to get in front of the GMA, GMA seven specifically at their January meeting.
Their deadlines.
Their deadlines for the explanatory, that, that, my apologies, for the draft, um, DFCs that they plan to provide the board. Um, we're really not changing the DFC, but we have to make sure we're getting by it because their calendar is about to change based on requirements that they have to meet as it relates to the meeting TWDB deadlines.
So this one's a report to put us on warning, things are fixing to get real busy.
Yes, sir.
That's a quick question on, I guess it'd be under number three, I don't know, but, you know, it's pretty common knowledge around here that Southwest Resource Initiative too, got some funding to do some science.
Yes, sir.
So, I assume that you know those people and maybe you're interacting with them and maybe you would have some input to, you know, what they do, you know, how that money could be best fit to, you know, move forward. Is there any action, interaction between you and those guys, or are they just gonna do their, their thing and then they're gonna say this, or?
So I, I, I know Ron Green, who I believe is involved in this, I have spoken with Ron Green previously at a GMA thirteen meeting about this very specific point. Um, it, it's gonna depend on timelines, when their data comes together, uh, and when we're working on task four and how that comes together. It may be one of those where we're able to work in harmony, or it may be one of those where we're a little disjointed in schedules. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't be able to kind of collaborate and reconvene as a group to do something at a later date that maybe updates something in task four, um, but I.
Not task four type stuff that it would fit into?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, but I do plan to collaborate with them if the opportunity, if in one.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask, you know, that, whatever, if you know what they're gonna do, my, you know, whatever help what you're gonna do, then, well.
Well, and it, as it specifically relates to groundwater flow pass, we've all been working with changes in elevation as it relates to how that water table looks as it relates to a high point in the water table and a low point in the water table. The data they're collecting is isotope data, which allows us to better correlate and track which waters related to what water in a way that's, um, providing us with another layer of support in terms of better understanding how water's flowing through that system, so it's all, it's all additive.
Okay.
The more data.
Yeah, whatever, what they do is additive to what you do and then, you know.
And, and vice versa, it, it should work both ways there on that too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have concerns about the mag?
Uh, yeah, I got questions about the mag, I think GMA seven has been discussing the mag, but I don't know, that's gonna come up at some point. You know, I, I don't wanna ask specific questions now about the DFC or the mag, but I think, uh, I mean, it's common knowledge that the mag is you know, way too high, let's go with that.
And, and, and TWDB.
I would call it common knowledge, is it common knowledge that the mag is too high currently or not? I will.
It depends on who you consider common, but most people know it.
And, and TWDB sets the mag, but we're providing them the technical justification and support to reevaluate how they're calculating the mag based on what was historic pumping around the seventy thousand acre foot area, the somewhere that's gonna be roughly seven to twelve thousand, somewhere in there maybe?
Yeah, and the question I had, I might as well ask it right now, is the model that was used to decide it was seventy currently hasn't changed, that Texas Water Development Board has used, unless, uh, you could quickly explain how they would go back, let's say, seven to twelve, twelve, let's go with seven to twelve. Do they use the same model, or do they, uh, you know, how do, how does that go?
I have a very specific note on that point, which is, bear with me for one moment here. This is specifically related to joint planning, and it's the district shall consider the GAMS and other data or information, so it's that and other data or information that we're hoping that they also rely on.
That would be pumping amounts.
And my understanding is historically, it's that and other data or information is how they got to where they are now.
Okay.
As it relates to the.
If they relook at it, they might get to somewhere else. Maybe.
Maybe, we're, we're gonna prepare a report that provides them hopefully a blueprint that they're able to follow.
Okay, cause Dr. Hutcheson had mentioned that, well, and he's told us as a board, you know, he's told the public when, in that deal, I mean, and he recommended a rule that is basically in line with the mag and it being what it is and how it was too high. Okay, that, that's, for now, that's all I got.
My hope is we'll get there, we're gonna provide what I believe will be sound technical justification for the board being able to reevaluate how the mag has historically been calculated here.
Okay, and we're on the timeline for that.
Yes, sir.
We're in line with what the state needs.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
That's it.
That's it, thank you, appreciate it, Vince, thanks for all your work. Discussion possible action moving the regular November, December meeting dates, Thanksgiving.
Jim's got a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. You're so quiet over there.
Well, hey, I don't need to talk after the night, I'm not sure.
We came in for getting this sun down.
I wanted to go, go back, when I was in the meeting last month, I apologize, they couldn't be here tonight, but when I was in the meeting that last month, there was a couple of questions. Um, particularly regarding the Garza study and the property behind the fort. Um, I wanna thank Director Palmer, I know, um, Director Palmer, you and I had some conversations about some data, you asked for some cross plots on some Austin chalk wells, and what I thought I was going to do, I did, I do have some other slides, maybe to address a couple of other comments, I, I regret that Director Minley is not here to hear some of this, um, I guess he stepped out. Um, but let, let me just walk through a couple of things real quick, these slides will be available. Um, Mario getting both of them up on the web if anybody has any additional questions. Um, Marty, I can barely see this paper, why don't you go through the first couple of ones, these are this introductory, you know, we'll try to keep this as short as possible. Yeah, I can, I can see it's just a little blurry. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, sir.
How am I gonna get closer?
Well, no, that's good, I mean, I can, I've got it on the screen, so. You're, you're fine.
Too close to break the camera.
Maybe go to just the, the monitoring one, go to the next slide. Yeah, I can't see next slide, where am I?
Here, uh, the DFC.
Oh, yeah, okay, go back, go back, Marty, I can't, I cannot see the screen, I'll just, it'd be white. Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can share one, I'll, I'll do that, share my screen.
It's the same thing you said.
Okay, uh, back up, back up, that makes back my computer up a little bit, sorry guys, if they're with me.
Is it just the angle to where you can't see it, or what?
Yeah, it may be, it might be.
Right up here.
Director Ward.
Right up here. We'll make it hard on him, since he has glasses on, doesn't look like it gets any better, does it? Well, there you go.
No, that's a lot better, yeah, that's good, that, yeah, whoa, too close.
No, it's just perfect. You're gonna sit there like a dummy, right? Oh, there you go. I'm not gonna sit here and hold this all night for you, Jim.
Marty carried him all the way over here.
There you go. Calm down. There you go. Are you on one of these binders?
Yeah.
Are you careful when you find this?
Okay, let's, let's talk about the DFC just for a second, because one of the, and I'll hit on this real quick. Well, one of the members of the public indicated something about missing the DFC for the last five years. That is absolutely categorically incorrect. Since the USPS moved the gauge in two thousand fourteen, we've missed the, we've missed the DFC twice. In two thousand fourteen, we missed the DFC, and there was five thousand acre feet of pumping in the county. Twenty twenty, we missed the DFC and there was ten thou, well, less than ten thousand, uh, ninety seven, ninety eight hundred acre feet of pumping, uh, pumping. The one common denominator, unprecedented drought conditions, ten hundred years, I have a fourteen, we made the DFC.
Jim, Jim.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Can I throw something in on that? Uh, I don't mean to interrupt, man, and I know, let's, uh, let's quantify your statement that we met the DFC in accordance with Dr. Hutcheson's proof as laid out in the management plan. Because if you look at what the actual annual, annual flow cubic feet per second is for, and it's not six years, but twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty twenty four. According to the USGS, the annual average spring flow in twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four went from, it was like, it varied from twelve annual average cubic feet per second to five point eight, whatever, annual average cubic feet per second, which is well below twenty four cubic feet per second. You know, and Dr. Mace has had opinions on it, and I know you're familiar with those on his blog. But, you know, according to Dr. Hutcheson and what the board here, what you're saying is correct. But not everybody might agree with, did we meet the DFC because the actual annuals the actual annual average cubic feet per second since twenty twenty has been well below twenty four cubic feet per second, and that's data proven fact.
Well, that's it, you're, you're correct in the average flow, but that's not how this district rules set up how the, how the DFC, how you meet or not meet the DFC base.
Right, no, that's, that's valid, I mean, I, I concede that, that's true. And that could be adapted in the past, but the way it's measured now and evaluated, we've met it. I understand, but.
Right, and so if, if you want to change the metric, going back historically, change the metric and reevaluate it a different way, I'm sure you can come up with a metric to show that we missed the DFC for every single year if you change the metric. But based on the manager rules and based on our management plan, and the current, uh, Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District rules, we met the, we met the DFC based on the current metric on how it's evaluated. If you wanna change the metric, we can certainly, you can certainly.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Not meet it at all.
Well, that, that's not the case, but we'll work that out with, uh, Reese Nichols and their representative.
I think that, that's something to be discussed, and this is something that Vince and I are working on, we're providing.
Yeah, totally.
If you want it to be evaluated differently, reevaluate it differently, but to stand up in the state that we didn't meet it based on the rules and based on the plan, is incorrect. Marty, that might be.
Thank you.
Um, city well number one, okay, so, city well number one, the other thing, and this is when Dr. uh, Director Minley was here, is that he said the aquifer has been declining since two thousand nineteen or whatever he said. This is the city well number one, which is right there by Ziggy, right by Highway ninety, just between where, where, um, Fort Mark Mine has their wells, that's better, or whatever you did on the screen. Um, wherever, um, between the, between the Spring Basin Pool and the City Guard, city well number one has not changed significantly since two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. The aquifer is not in this rapid decline in certain areas. Um, you certainly can find areas where it's declined, the one thing that did change is if you look at, and I don't know what year that is, twenty twenty two-ish, where the city started pumping from that well, this well has a one-to-one correlation with flow that's coming out in the spring, just like. This well has a one to one correlation with flow that's coming out in the spring, just like Fort Clark mud. Very similar to city well two, and what we talked about here in a minute is the Tulareza well. They, this, they started pumping this well, and for the record, for anybody that's listening, the city does not report pumping out of this well, they show it as zero. Um, they also incorrectly state this is city well number two, but if you look at historical stuff, that's a whole different issue. But what I wanted to address with Dr. or Director Minley's comment that the aquifer is showing rapid decline, that is not the case. And I've got a lot of wells showing that it's not the case, the spring has dried up, uh, is, uh. More than it ever has before, back to back to back, and there's reasons for that, and we're looking into that. But to say, to make a flat out statement that the aquifer has been declining since two thousand nineteen is incorrect. And I've got thirty graphs that can show you the similar thing of why that's not the case. Also got a lot of other graphs that show in certain areas where it is declining, but across the county, this is, that is an incorrect statement, Marty, that slide. Garza, okay, so this is what we wanted to talk about. Because, um, it was meeting last month, um, uh. President Brown said he, one of the members, uh, our members of the public asked me a question about the Garza study. And, um. Uh, I wanted to make sure that I was looking at the same study, we've looked at all, Dr. Bill and I looked at all these historical reports a long time ago. Wanted to look at again, uh, Director Palmer was kind enough to send me the link to, to, to this particular study that Ms. Brown was talking about. And Garza, uh, one of the things about Garza, he did, he did several of these reports and he did them back to back to back. But what he didn't do any of his own independent studies, what he did is he synthesized a lot of other reports that had been done for a wide ranging area. And multiple counties including Kenny, and what's good about these studies is that it really, it looked at a holistic approach. It went up to ten thousand or thirty thousand feet and just looked at the regional aquifer conditions. And here you've got some groundwater elevations, um, shows bracket, if you still, you see Kenny County bracket right through the middle. Some groundwater elevation contours, and you can see that if you go up, um, the, um. Rock Springs Road, six seventy four, you go north of bracket, you can see the contours, and as we know, water is flowing perpendicular to the contours. So from six seventy four, water is flowing essentially from the northeast towards the southwest. As you go further, you go to three thirty four, the Campford Road, and you see the contours change direction, and I think. Vince alluded to this, the King County Pool area, I know Ron, Ron's done, or, um, Mr. Green, Dr. Green has done some work in this area. But you see water going the other direction with some very low, uh, elevations, this was in nineteen sixty six, next slide please. Okay, specifically, there was a well that was discussed and brought up in the meeting, it was V sixteen, if you look in the upper left corner. Um, the way Garza did, this is old school back when I was going to school. He did it by hand and everything was great, based on this is V. Okay, and if, and if you look right there towards bracket, towards Lost Morris Springs, there's V six, there's a well that's right there, V six. And one of the, one of the comments in the public meeting, or in the meeting from members of the public, was that when V six was pumped, the spring went dry. Well, what's unfortunate about the high level analysis that's done in this report is there's not a lot of detail about each of these individual locations. And so, um, I was not readily, um, it was not readily available to me nor in my search and research trying to find information. About that particular well, V six, I don't know where it is, but it's certainly in close proximity to Lost Morris Springs. And I don't have any independent information that would, that would make a conclusion that if you pump V six. Um, certain amount, and so now the spring would go dry, um, in a certain period of time, whether drought, not drought, et cetera. Um, okay, next slide. Uh, um, well, this was, uh, um, I don't need to talk about this, but this was a snapshot this morning or of data two days ago. This is the current PC and metric surface in Kenny County, I don't, we, we don't need to talk about that, but we've got a lot of information to show this. We'll get into this later and talk about this next one, next slide. Okay, so let's go to Edwards Aquifer floor, because this is something that was put together in two thousand fifteen, this is the guy tree study, I think. I'm tracing groundwater flow pass, this was done by the Edwards Aquifer authority, we, we, I'm looking at a lot of reference. So, this is, this is taken from LGB guy group, um, I know Dr. Hudson said worked with them for a little while. And what you're looking at, north is to the top, and what you're looking at are the different, um, the different geological formations. And you can see all of them listed on the right, um, and then you've got any coins of sink line, so any coin. The, the geologic formation comes up, sink line comes down, some people call it horse and robin, you've got other things that are happening. But, but, but what I wanted to point to everybody is in the middle there, you see those two vertical, they're igneous rocks, they're, they're metamorphosis igneous rock. It's been, it's intruded up in there, and what they do is they create groundwater impediments. And so flow doesn't go through igneous rock, you can see Pinto Mountain to the left, Turkey Mountain, Lost Morris there down towards the bottom. But these mountains, um, volcanic nature come up and they redirect how groundwater is flowing through the system. And so you see these anti, um, I don't know, I don't have, but they see the arrows that come down, these arrows. The way that, the way it's led to, they really compartmentalize flow, and, and so you. Builders not, unless you're in the volcanoes far, it's fault zone, and we've got the ladder vaults, and you've got, we're looking at. We're looking at cross, cross correlation between the two, but what you've done is you've got water flowing down each of these compartments. And they're almost like aisles, like a bowling lane or something, so, next slide. So when you get rain in a certain area, and this is kind of our sweet zone for the, for the spring. So when you get rain in a certain area, the water begins to flow, not all water comes to the spring. And so if you, if you consider you move, if you make that, that green oval a lot bigger. You can see where you have a lot more water going to the left hand side, or you're going to the right hand side, but the sweet spot for the spring. Really is between these two igneous formations and this compartmentalized bowling alleys, if you will, where water will flow. This is not something that I put together, this is not something that Chris put together, this is something that the Edwards Aquifer put together. And this is something that's part of our toolbox in how we're trying to study, what is rechargeable spring and what is not. And, and this is something, um, so this is a higher level detail, Vince has done a great job in the geology and. We're working with him on water levels and, and we're, we're going here, but I really need to understand, y'all need to understand, there is a big misconception. And again, I wish Director Minley's here, this whole thing is just all connected and it's all the same, slide please. Okay, so let's go, so if you, um, go back for a second here, I'm sorry, Marty, go back one more slide. So if you go, uh, definitely show the road, so if you go down, say, the middle, the middle of this green path of this green oval. If you go down from the middle of it, just follow one of these lines, one of these arrows, next slide please. The monitoring location that is circled in, in green is O two, monitored by others, it's a second one, this is the Tulareza well. This is the Texas Water Development Board, well, next slide please. You've seen this graph before, I just added another month's worth of data, and so you see another little swipe, but you see how closely. The Tulareza depth of water level in blue follows the Lost Morris Spring flow. Why? Because it is within that same bowling alley where you get, you charge it to Tulareza, you get a response in the spring.
Something else you gotta be reading right now.
You, you want to go back, I'm sorry, Director, did you have a question?
No, no. No, I was just commenting on the fact that there's subtle differences there, here and there, but they, they track each other a whole bunch.
Yeah, and, and again, I need to be really clear, and, yeah, I know Director Palmer, you and I had a great conversation. You know, one, one Sunday watching football or whatever, but the, you know, they're, I'm not saying things are absolute. I'm just saying this is the data that we have, and this is what we're looking at, and we will continue to look, we're trying to figure this out. Um, I, again, I can't thank the board enough, I appreciate, you've got a hydro geologist on board, we can work together, I can collect the data. We can look at this as for discussion, but these blanket statements and the narrative of trying to push a certain direction and certain agenda. Is just not helpful at all, next slide please. Okay, so this is the Tulareza, this is the exact same graph, but I just want to show, look at the depth of water on the left. And you see here, look at the depth of about one eighty five, and come across the two thousand nineteen in the Tulareza well. And, and in the Tulareza well, this is an area where there's no pumping. It's in the Edwards Helpcroft area, where it's in the recharge zone for, for the Edwards. Um, and looking at about one eighty five, and since then, this well, it hasn't since we continued to go down since about twenty twenty. Since the start of the drought, it's gone down, and you see the spikes when we got raining and how much it's come up, go to the next slide please. Okay, and in twenty twenty two, or twenty twenty three, Dr. Hudson said put this graph together, and he did. He did several of these cross plots, um, city well number one was the highest correlated well to, uh, Lost Morris Springs. City well two and, and Fort Clark mud are since higher, um, also highly correlated. Tulareza well was the fourth, fourth went down, correlated, this is March sixteenth. To June of twenty twenty two, and this is end of the month data, so you've got four, six years. Uh, six times twelve, you got about seventy two data points shown on this graph, next slide please. Okay, so this is the same data, except what I did is I took seventy eight thousand a data point. And I plotted, and if you include all of those, our R squared coefficient is eight, six, eight, seven. And technically, my R coefficient is negative point nine three, highly, highly correlated. Um, negative meaning that as the, um, as the depth of water, um, goes higher, higher number, the flow goes down. And if you go, if you go back, um, I'm looking at the back of Director Robinson's cap right now. But if you, uh, if you look there, you know, um, but if you look, uh. Go, go down to about eighty, I know you're fine, um, you go down to about eighty five, from eighty five down to ninety, it's. It, it is almost a perfect straight line, when you get down lower in the aquifer. The, the Lost Morris Springs and the Tulareza are almost. And the one thing that's come out recently, as we've looked at the, see these big arcing curves in here? As there's more, as more water in the aquifer in Tulareza, um, comes in, the springs going up, the water level. Into the well and wa, the water level in Tulareza well, in fact, the water does get, loses, um, water's going other places besides just down the same bowling house. So you are getting some spillover, but spillover effect, and this is, again, this is rough data. The stuff we're looking at, it's stuff that, um, Vince is gonna be able to take a look at, Mr. Claus and all of his team at Freezer Nichols. They're gonna be able to take a look at this, next slide please.
I asked one quick question, Jim.
Yes, sir.
So if I, I'm, I'm gonna try and dumb down what you said just there, if I understood that right, the lower the water level is, the more they correlate?
The lower the, that's, that's correct, because the transitivity, once you get high enough. Water is not just going to the spring, it's going to other places.
Right, so it doesn't, if it's full, it's not connected as much when it's full, as when it's lower, it's more connected.
No, it's just as much connected, it's just the transmissivity of the hydraulic conductivity between Tulareza and the spring can only hold. Can only hold so much.
But it talks, it talks more when the water level's down as opposed to when it's up. If, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Although I could state that as a blanket statement, certainly if more water's in the aquifer, more water's gonna come out of the spring. But the wet, but the water level in the Tulareza well isn't gonna keep going up because it, it, it's trapped enough. At a higher level, the water's going other places rather than just sitting.
Back into that well.
It's back in where Tulareza is.
I'm with you, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so now, so now let me look at this one, this is something that came out. Um, y'all were talking about the Austin Chalk and all this stuff, and this is something that Bennett said. Um, unfortunately, this particular graphic, I just threw this in there for a little opportunity, if you will, but the Edwards is associated limestone. You know, you got the, the night formation, the salmon peak, um, there's others that are in here, that are, that are their own separate aquifers. And if you look at this, look at where the Austin Chalk is, it is a thin layer up on top. And where Lost Morris is, it just barely hits that, and so, um, let's look at the Austin Chalk just for a second, next slide please. Okay, so here, now here we are, and, and Director Palmer, this goes back to something you and I had talked about. Um, I think this goes back to the Garza question, this, and the wells that are behind the fort. And so we've looked at these wells, they are within the Austin Chalk, and so Marty, go back one more slide please. They're in the Austin Chalk, and you see where the Austin Chalk is, so these wells are up here in the Austin Chalk, south of, of the spring. Um, and water levels and elevation, static water levels at an elevation of about ten thirty, ten fifty. Where the water in the spring is, is, um, I think as of today, it was eleven. Uh, sixteen, eleven seventeen, the base of the set, spring basis on, on the six, we're on the seven, okay, let's look at, go one more slide please. Okay, so here, we're gonna look at those wells down in the fort, next slide please. These are the correlations we're taking for wells in the Austin Chalk. Which means it's not correlated, look at our R squared coefficient point zero zero nine six. This is typical for Austin Chalk wells. Um, and I know, I don't know if Mr. Schott's still in the room or not, but I know y'all were talking about Mr. Schott's wells way to the west. Um, his wells in the Austin Chalk, a hundred and fifty feet deep. And his groundwater static elevations are about ten thirty or ten twenty five. Seventy feet lower than any water that's, that's going into the spring, and on the other side of one of those intrusive structures. And so, um, Director Bland, I think, made a comment, hey, I don't think the Austin Chalk is connected, well, neither do we. Right now, now it doesn't mean that we're not gonna keep looking and we're gonna keep getting more data points and, you know. On this, on this particular graph, I've got twelve thousand data points that are plotted on this right. And I forget you did our coefficient from the wells behind the fort. Um, that are in the Austin Chalk, point zero zero nine six with anything, oh, you saw the two. At the, the, the Lost Morris Spring flow, you're gonna see, you'll see it go up and down, and nothing's gonna change here, next slide please. Okay, so now let's talk about this, now let's talk about Lost Morris and then I'll wrap it up. So I just wanted to point out on this one, if you can see. The, the gray line on the bottom, that's where we were last year, the blue line on the top, that's where we are today, you can see the big. The big dips where the fort takes water out, and so it goes, it goes down. Um, you know, they're taking water out, so the water goes spring, but what I wanted to point out is these diurnal changes, can you see this little going up and down? This is not the diurnal changes from the, from Fort Clark mud pumping their wells, where we're seeing pressure changes. In the spring basin, you know, uh, Fort Clark turns on their wells, water level goes up and down six, seven inches. Um, in the spring basin, these diurnal changes are about a, a one and a half to two CFS every day when it gets hot. And trees are taking up water, and then cools down, and trees, trees don't take up any more water, every single day, you see these little up and down about two CFS. The, the spikes right here, this is when we got a little bit of rain, and then the larger spike, we got rain. And a lot of that is not water, that's not water that's necessarily coming out of the spring. But this is water that's just running into the creek and it's being picked up by the USPS gear. Um, ideally, at some point, we, and I know that I've talked to Vince about this, if we've looked at that gauge, we all think that that gauge is not very helpful. I mean, it, it, you know, if the fort would allow, if anybody's listening with the fort, if they would allow us to put in additional equipment in the creek. Or we can monitor this on a more limited, helpful data collection basis, I would love to put another game or supplement. The USPS gauge that's in there, but, um, to, to understand more of what spring was runoff, et cetera, next slide, I think that's it. Question, yeah, okay, that's it, thank you for the time, I, I'm here for questions if y'all need.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. Did they got any additional questions before we move on?
Okay, item number nine, discussion possible action moving the regular November, December meetings, dates due to Thanksgiving and Christmas. What's for his pleasure?
Moving the meetings? No, item number nine.
Okay, the. The November meeting, it's like falls, uh, two days, but three days before Thanksgiving. The December meeting, uh, falls three days before Christmas. So, in the event that anybody's, vacation plans, what have you, just to kind of accommodate everybody. Suggestion is to move it, I think y'all have that in your packet.
I'm for moving it back, I'm for moving it back a week, I think that's what it had in the packet, if I recall correctly.
Was to move it to the previous week, which would be the. December, November is eighteen.
Which is why we had the fourth Tuesday open because. Nobody wants the fourth Tuesday because of Christmas and Thanksgiving. That's why I got that one, but that's okay, um, that's fine by me, what's the pleasure of the board, have a motion?
That work for you, Greg, like we should probably, since part of the, you know, impetus is, that's good for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
All right, just for the record, there was a couple of days ago, something on. Social media that stated something to the effect that the only reason that the change was being made was to accommodate an employee. I don't know what employee that would be. We each tried to take a little, maybe an extra day off at Christmas or Thanksgiving. But that's things like that or statements like that are just what cause problems. That's just my opinion, to make a statement, a flat out statement to that effect. Just ladies noted for doing that.
To help clarify this, I I've recommended this agenda item to Janelle, because I have exactly two. Clients that meet the fourth week of the month. And the other one moves their November and December meetings every single year. So I thought, you know, you all might want to, you might not, ought to have the chance to be able to do that, so I made that recommendation. I'm I'm happy to be here that third Tuesday, more than the fourth Tuesday, both of us.
I I had been out of the newspaper business for so long, I forgot that Thanksgiving and Christmas did that. Every single year, we had a short week, every time, every time.
Then I just wanted to make the point that this, once again, this individual puts out erroneous information.
Duly noted. So.
I'm good either way.
I'm good either way, doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
I moved that we change it.
You moved it, what?
I moved that we change it as depicted in the notes.
Okay.
The dates that are recommended.
I'll second that motion, any further discussion on the matter?
To be the eighteenth and sixteenth, eighteenth to November, sixteenth to December, right?
Yes, sir, eighteen for November, sixteen December, if I'm not mistaken, we just moving it all back one week. Okay, any other further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those, same side motion carries unanimously. November and December meeting dates are moved. Janelle, item number ten, discussion possible action, copy machine and Marlin leasing. Janelle, that would be you.
Okay, I request that uh this be placed on next month's agenda. Uh, I was hoping to have something from uh. Uh, Southwest Copy Machine.
Oh, so we don't have the, we didn't want to get in the lease from?
So.
We don't, we didn't, we didn't want to get anything from? Oh, okay, so we need to table it.
Just for the table, it, next we'll have something.
I would entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Motion has been made by Director Ward and seconded by Director Shot. The table, all those in favor. Raise your right hand. All those both same sign, motion carries unanimously. Janelle, item number eleven, discussion possible action bylaws.
Uh, the reason it's this year is because last time we we amended. Two parts of the bylaws, but there wasn't a motion to adopt all the other amendments that I had recommended to you. So I'm gonna make sure we're covered. And I didn't see, I didn't, I did not see that in the minutes, I want to mention recovery that we have, that we're looking for a motion to approve all of the recommended amendments. As they were amended last time.
Right, except we got one thing that we need to change. So. I am going to move that. Uh, to approve the bylaws as presented with the exception of changing the competitive quotation requirement in bylaw eight point seven C. Which is currently eight point eight C from one thousand to ten thousand dollars.
That's essentially the requirement is the the level of the contract amount. That would require the staff to go out and find competitive bids or or ask for seat bids on them. So anything under the ten, if the movement passed, the the motion passes, then the. Anything under ten thousand dollars.
You don't have to go out and seek, you don't have to seek competitive bids, travel safe, Vince.
Find and buy it and be done.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second to approve the bylaws. As presented with the exception of the uh. Competitive quotation requirement, which we're raising from one thousand to ten thousand. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Janelle, item number twelve, discussion possible action, financial statements for September twenty twenty five.
Let me go through this, um, total income, six hundred and seventy seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and fifty six cents. Total expenses, four hundred and ninety four thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars and seventeen cents. The net profit lost, a hundred and eighty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars and thirty nine cents. Evergloryum taxes receivable is a uh negative one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy six cents. Expenses payable is payable is two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety one cents. The net is a negative four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty seven cents. Counts receivable, sixteen thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty seven cents. General fund is negative eight thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars and thirty cents. Money market is two hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy eight cents. Eddie cash is three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy two cents. The well log deposits, five thousand, two hundred. Text pool, eight hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars and twelve cents. The first CD is a hundred and thirty five thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollars and nineteen cents. And CD number two is two hundred and fifty six thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars and forty eight cents.
Any discussion? Entertained a motion to appro- approve the financial statements.
I'll move.
Motion's been made by Director Shot, so we have a second.
Second.
And seconded by Director Bland, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Janelle, item number thirteen. Review monthly investment report. Text pool does give you a lot better answer today, doesn't it?
No.
Any questions? Okay, no action on that one, we're moving on. Number fourteen, discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I assume that's approved. Motion's been made and seconded by Director Bland, seconded by Director Shot, approved. Invoices received, invoices paid, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Director's request for items on next or future agenda. Well. I think we got a, I think we got a permit, we're gonna have to have on future agenda, because we didn't take any action on it in March.
What do you mean, we didn't take action on it?
We need to take any action on shots as amendment.
I think it failed.
No.
The motion failed.
Motion failed.
Not a motion to deny, there was, there was a motion to grant that failed. That doesn't mean we're denying, it certainly hasn't been granted. Okay, but it doesn't mean deny, it just means it wasn't granted.
Right. Means no action was taken by the board, so I think it needs to go back on the agenda.
I need a brush control committee, agenda item. Just general information and update, please.
Sounds good.
You gotta vote on all these, right? You get the, you get the, you can vote on each individually or you can vote on the, on them as a group. I think we should, so we're on them individually.
That's fine, I'll second the brush, uh, I'll second the uh, the Janelle for the brush management committee. Motion been made and seconded, head brush manage, make many on the next agenda, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
I think something that I would like to see on the agenda, and I asked Greg about it on the break, is just to kind of clarify and make sure it's clear. Put Freeze Nichols or Vince Claus update, I guess it would be moved, I would move that Freeze Nichols uh. Plan update would be on every month agenda, because I mean, it's something that we're gonna be working on for a while. And it should just be clear to the public that the hydrology experts are gonna be here updating the county. Uh, on, you know, what's the newest status on that. So I move that we put on the agenda every month, uh, discussion. Freeze Nichols hydrology update.
I think we got a problem with doing it every month, because we are approving the agenda month at a time, so.
Next, we move that we put it on next month's agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion about it? All right, all those in favor of putting Freeze Nichols on next month's agenda, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
And one more last would be that, I don't know if we need to move this, but um. We need to get that test well rule um thing that we voted on last month, um, done. All right, recommend that we do, we voted last month, uh, put it in the paper and have a public hearing. That was the rule that's proposing the changes to the test well rules and changing.
I'll think we need to take action on that, since we're already planning on having on there anyway.
Because if you want, no, I mean, you mean it's planned to be on the next month's agenda already?
Yep.
Cause I'm not aware of that, so if it is, fine.
Well, no, we were all told that, but that.
No, we voted.
If we, if we, if we need it, Director, I'm just trying to tell you, if you want to vote on it again, that's fine, make a motion.
No, no, just confirm what you're saying is, what we voted on last month was to put it in the paper and have a public hearing. And do, do the vote on it. Should have happened this month, but it's gonna happen next month, that's what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then disregard.
Absolutely, okay, now I move that we put. Randy shot, uh, or shot regular permit on next month's agenda, because we didn't take any action on it. And we were gonna have to address it, one way or another, whether we deny, whether we grant it apart, whether we grant it in full or whatever we do with it. It can't just sit there, so I'm motion, I'm making a motion that we put this back on the agenda.
So I do have some discussion on this, Greg, and you need to clarify this. You said that, uh, and it's, it's a rule I know, four people have to vote to approve something. But if four people don't approve something, it doesn't fail, it just didn't happen. The motion fails. Motion fails. Now, right, so the motion is to grant, that motion fails, it's not granted. That doesn't mean it's denied.
In other words, if the board didn't take action.
It's almost the same as tabling it.
Basically the same thing.
The board doesn't take action unless four are in agreement. So, well, we didn't mo- move to table it. And so that doesn't automatically, if it was moved to table, it would automatically go on the next agenda. And that's why I'm bringing it up on future agenda items, because we're gonna have to address it anyway, might as well just put it on there.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion about? All right, motion's been made and seconded to place the shot regular permit back on next month's agenda, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, four oh, Director Shot is abstaining because he's involved. All right, now, what else you got, gentlemen?
The copy machine.
Uh, the copying machine, yep, we need to get that meeting on there, well, we already tabled that, so it goes on automatically.
The lease agreements left, right, Wes?
Yeah, we ta- we tabled that one, uh, let's see, we're getting there.
Sixteen.
Okay, y'all don't have anything else on fifteen? Okay, we've done that one, so now, lease agreement with Lost Morris Masonic Lodge, which I have accomplished interest in, so. I'm gonna turn over the to, the gavel to Director Ward and he can handle that one. And I bid y'all adieu. I'll bring these copies out of Bonnie and mine.
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one of those things.
What?
It's not about that, we did last year in December, uh, or November. No, we did, never mind, we did it in December.
Okay, we're good to go, let me get up and let y'all finish your business. I'm sure I was, safe travels, going home, sure, okay.
All right. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action lease agreement with Lost Morris Masonic Lodge. I think we've been back and forth on this, um, y'all know the story, right? Do I need to repeat it, they raised it to a thousand?
The story is that, no.
So, uh, in your packet, you'll see there, it says that, uh, now I can read letter to you, good afternoon, Janelle. At the lodge's last meeting, it voted, voted and authorized me to present the water district with the following rental options. One year contract, one thousand dollars a month, three year contract, nine hundred dollars a month, five year contract, eight hundred dollars a month. Please present these numbers to the board and let me know how they'd like to proceed, thank you, Tully Welch.
We'll have to check with Janelle, I thought she told me yesterday or today, I think it was yesterday when I came in, that. One option was month to month, but that's not on the sheet, so it's a year contract. No double.
Yeah, it was five hundred. And jumped to a thousand, but sound like they want to keep this in here long term, so you're getting a little discount if you go.
That's what it sounds like.
My thoughts on that, I don't recommend any kind of long contract, I think we need to explore other options like we have, you know, thought about. I don't know, I don't know what our options are, what are, you know, it's, what's option B? I mean, option, that's, that's it, it's either pick a year or get kicked out, or what's our options? I mean, what are they gonna do if we just say no? Are they gonna, you know, find somebody else to give a thousand dollars a month, like?
I don't know, unless we want to do one year contract at eight hundred a month, see if they'll go for that, I don't know.
Or just month to month.
Or just month to month. Janelle, did they give us a month to month option or not? The lodge?
This, this is all we have.
Okay, that's all they have.
All they, okay. So where, where are we at, are we looking for anything, or what are we doing?
I was brainstorming and like, I visited with a few people and I found some lots, but I've got a visit with the owners. And so I don't know if we need to form a committee to kind of do a property. We either need to buy some lots or we need to buy. And if we buy lots now that are available, there's nothing to say we can't sell the lots later on, but at least we're taking steps in the right direction. The only problem is the lots that are around that I've found are gonna need demolition work. So that's gonna be an extra cost. Um, but we need enough space to where we can have room for Jim and Vince and everybody else that's here.
Parking.
Parking.
Is there anything that's available outside city limit?
I haven't thought of anything, uh, man, Palmer did.
Is there any other place to rent too, like, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. Where else could we rent for five hundred bucks a month?
Nowhere.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
I haven't done it, but I was gonna check the appraisal district and see if there was something that maybe on the tax.
I don't know, to me, it seems like a bluff, it's like a poker bluff. Like, what if you just say no, and just keep saying no, table it again, or what are they gonna do, table it every month and they're gonna kick us out?
Where we gonna go if they kick us out?
I don't know, but would they, you know, it's like a, like.
I don't think that.
I just don't think it's cool to double our rent, like, I just, I just not liking it.
So that's always somebody's option, what they want to.
So that's always somebody's option or what they want to do.
It's their building, you know, it's their option.
Realistically, if we bought a piece of property tomorrow, it would be a year before you.
It's gonna be a year.
Really.
Right, yeah. We can say that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if y'all want to do the one, we're gonna pay a thousand dollars a month regardless, obviously, right? If we go month to month, because that's our rent.
I don't, I don't know that we have any options. It's so big.
I think we gotta be real serious about trying to find out some property to do something with it.
And that's gonna take time. It's not gonna happen overnight.
We can take property.
You wanna go with some? They don't give us a two year. No, they don't.
If anybody has any ideas, let me know. I mean, I don't mind chasing the rabbit down the hole, trying to get something.
I mean, Janelle, you got any recommendations? What do you think?
The, the one I'd love to have is these, and it would certainly demolition, whatever, just clean up, right, right at Catty Corner.
Yeah.
Stone building there. And.
So in the meantime, would you go with the one year or what would you do for? For now.
I'd stretch it out. Two years would be good, but I hate, kinda hate stretching out three years. But I think two years, okay, so.
You want to hit him at two years at eight hundred?
No, that's what I mean.
Even two years at a thousand.
Tonight was evident that we need more space.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were a full house, so we need more space. So it's not really working for us.
I think that'd be great to um, we can table it and approach them for a two-year contract for uh, eight hundred.
I'd say two years at uh, nine hundred.
Nine hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a compromise.
Yeah.
So how would you go about, would we?
Well, let's see if they want to do that.
Basically, we just take no action on this, like, just, just uh, no action. Uh, Greg, you got any recommendations? How do we deny that? This up, the, just let Janelle ask them if they'll take two years for nine hundred.
Say that you're negotiating.
Yeah, so it's just.
Negotiation.
So I withdraw my motion.
Um, just like, just make a motion that would go in negotiations with them. It's gonna bounce around.
That would be your motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, negotiations. I move to allow Janelle to enter negotiations for a, a better deal.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Director Palmer and a second by Director Bland.
Is it, uh, one of the things, is there any, y'all haven't set any options of the, you know, a piece of property that might be five or six acres?
If you can find it, it's hard to find. It's pretty much landlocked. We keep on negotiating, like this might be an alibi meeting, who knows?
How does intimate domain work? I know we can do that, so.
Um.
I would like something kind of in town, yeah, well, kind of, I guess, closer in town or something, just for security. Purpose, I guess.
I thought if we did something on the main drag, whichever drag it is, and made it look nice for Brackettville, you know what I mean, kind of, you know, people see it and they're like, wow, you know, Brackettville's got a nice water district, nice town and.
That's right. We enjoy these.
He, I think everybody in the world's been working on him.
Yeah.
And he's just holding tight.
Yep.
Oh.
Well, when I think of out in the country, it's a long one out there. That's too far out.
Yeah. And that's not secure out there.
That wouldn't be secure.
That'd be demoed, so. The demo of that one would be. But.
I was, I didn't try to think of a good sized house we could go in, you know?
I'm almost to the point now, because I thought about the house and I'm like, wouldn't it be nice just to start fresh?
Yep.
Where you have a melon, a melon, you know, bathroom.
The old rodeo arena, was it?
That belongs to Joe Furick. And I think he would sell, it's low, it would have to be built tall. That belongs to Joe Furick. I can call him.
There's enough property there. That's like four or five acres, ain't it?
Even if he would just sell maybe two acres or, you know, I don't know. I, I visited with him about a years ago on another deal and he was, he wasn't against selling, but.
He might have. That one might be a good place.
Yeah.
I guess we should have put that on next month's agenda.
Wait, or behind the family dollar.
Marty said that the, behind the family dollar, those lots are available.
Where that forest store was and that, it's got a cover, I mean, yeah. I don't know if it's for sale or it may be on the tax.
It's Mitty's Bus Barn, it used to be, yeah, and the old concrete plant.
Or those lots, next to it, where those houses are. Casey's, yeah. It can't be concrete.
That's almighty right there.
Or the concrete, or the concrete house, Spring Street house, incomplete.
Is it big enough?
I mean, you can make it, yeah.
You're talking about that cinder block?
Yeah, the cinder block.
I was wondering about that. It's got a for sale sign out there.
They have this uh, Massagill, I think Massagill's got that right there in between that house and the, that lot.
They used to have that carples there. I don't know if he still owns that or not.
Uh, Woody probably does, I imagine.
Yeah. We'll start working on it. But I think we do need to do something. I think we're all in agreement on that.
It just kind of outgrown. This is working out right, but.
All right, we've got a motion and saying any further discussion?
Just clarify the motion again for the notes to uh, ask Janelle to enter further negotiations. All right.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone second.
All those in favor, signature, raise your right hand. All those in favor, or all in agreement, no opposed. Any adjourn?